6:04 and we're going to begin. Welcome to our open session. I'm going to call this meeting to order and we will start with our pledge of allegiance. No, we'll start with our roll call. Mitch Bailey, if you will help me out here.
President Ford.
Here.
Sure thing. President Ford.
Here.
Vice President Neuris.
Neuris.
Trustee Goodman.
Here.
Trustee Holliver.
Here.
Trustee Medel Curran.
Here, somewhere.
There you are. I see you.
Student trustee Jeanette.
Yeah.
Where'd she go?
And also President Laura, Chancellor Claire, Piñata College President Dr. Moore, Skyline College President Dr. Marino, CSM Interim President Ken Lopez, and CFO Bernada Slater.
Thank you. And we have our magic flag to do a pledge of allegiance for all those who want to partake. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Mitch Bailey. We are ready. We will begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, somebody's got their kitchen going. Okay. There aren't any actions from closed sessions to report. So we will now move to state statements from the public on non-agenda items. If there are any statements, we have the hand raising opportunity. A total of 20 minutes. We allow for this, three minutes per person. So anybody from the public who would like to speak right now can raise your hand. And that would be John.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is John Pimentel. Trustees, thank you for the time and opportunity to speak with you. I wanted to bring to your attention a letter that I sent to you all today through the administration directly, calling for your consideration of an emergency condition that exists in our county, which is the effect of the COVID crisis on working families in our Latinx community. As you know, or have probably read, the Latinx community has been on the front line for much of our essential work and has been infected with the disease at a rate two to three times greater than any other ethnic group. Additionally, many people in the Latinx community are in their living in the service sector, which has been disproportionately impacted by the COVID disease and its related shutdowns. I would like the board to consider, please, as you plan the agenda for the next budget meeting, a thorough discussion of the opportunity that may exist, which would be to utilize a portion of the budget reserve in order to fund an emergency program to rapidly retrain service workers who've been displaced by the COVID shutdowns and create a free tuition policy for a working families, not just those that qualify under the current rules, but those that may qualify by having increased the threshold for which financial support is available. And then lastly, to consider doubling the size of the Promise Scholars Program, which includes, as you all know, incredibly useful assistance for those programs which are non-tuition based, I should say expenses which are non-tuition based, such as books, technology, transportation, mental health, and even housing. So I know that the board doesn't have this on the agenda tonight. I'm hopeful that the board will request staff to put it on the agenda for the next meeting and that we can have a robust discussion around how to utilize the $43 million surplus in our budget in this emergency time of crisis without making any imprudent decisions about maintaining a proper reserve for future economic uncertainties. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will now move to our study session 20-91C, a review and discussion of student housing feasibility study results. Chancellor Claire, you would like to open and introduce the discussion, please.
Yes, thank you, President Schwartz. And first of all, I want to thank the board and those that are participating in tonight's meeting. I know we generally do not have board meetings on Thursday nights. We just have such a packed agenda of items to discuss in the next few months that I requested an additional meeting. This is an important topic and I wanted to make sure that the board had sufficient time to hear the presentation and ask questions. So I thank you for indulging me with this extra meeting on a Thursday night. I wanted to just take a little bit, just a bit of time, because I think, you know, we really want to get to the meat of the presentation. But I think it's really important because this has been an ongoing discussion and it's really more for the benefit of the public, frankly, than the board, because you've been part of this ongoing discussion for quite some time. But I really wanted to kind of get us calibrated in terms of where we're at right now. And I want to, I want to state some facts. I want to be very clear and unambiguous about facts because it's really important that everybody understands exactly where we're at. There's times where people tend to jump to conclusions and so I just want to make sure everybody understands exactly where we're at. This has been an ongoing discussion. I recognize it. I certainly heard the discussion, you know, for quite some time, even when I was president of CSM. I think the discussion culminated in a study session that actually occurred on October 23rd. I actually went back and read the minutes of that just to make sure my recollection was correct. And at that time, the board asked the administration to go forward and authorized us to go forward with an RFP to engage a consultant because we know that this is a very complex issue. We have some in-house expertise, believe it or not, in terms of the operation of residence halls. We actually have people among us that have done this in other, at other community colleges, albeit probably at a smaller scale. But there are other aspects of this where we really don't have the expertise. And so what we've done, and Mitch can talk to you a little bit more about this, is we asked our colleagues, other colleges, because there's other colleges that have been dealing with this. Santa Rosa Junior College, for example, is one that we had hoped to visit. And we said, what consultants are you using? What experts are you using? And unanimously, people came back with the Scion Group. And so we were fortunate enough to engage Scion Group. And this is a group, and again, Mitch can tell you a little bit about them. I'm sure they'll tell you a little bit about themselves as well. They have significant expertise. And more importantly to us, they have some expertise now in the California Community College space. And that was important for us. This is not their first foray into working with California community colleges. And they, I'm sure they'll talk a little bit about that. The other thing I want to be very clear about is I know in the past there was some talk about building housing for international students. And frankly, that didn't get very far with the board as a whole. So I want to be very clear, again, particularly for the benefit of the public. Certainly, international students are very important to us, but all students are important to us. So we envision a student housing as housing for all students, not just the international students. And I think that was the direction we got from the board. We heard you loud and clear on that. Ultimately, the decision is yours, but that's how we see this going. Again, for the benefit of the public, this is a decision that will be made by the board in full view of the public. Our role as an administration is to bring you the information that you need to make some sort of final determination. So I want to be very clear, no decision has been made. We are not making any recommendations. We, our role here is to bring you the information, allow you to ask questions of the experts, and direct us towards next steps. And then finally, I'll just leave it at this. And I might be stealing some of Mitch's thunder. As we investigated it, investigated this issue, we recognize it's extraordinarily complex. It's a major decision that you will be making ultimately at some point. And we chunk it down into bite-sized components. To talk about student housing as a whole, all-in-one study session, is way too much. And really, we need to be very disciplined in our approach, very disciplined even in the conversation tonight. So the first step in all of our minds is, does this pencil out? Is there a sufficient student demand? We have done internal studies, as you've known, and we have pretty darn good researchers that do that work. In our own internal studies, there was a resounding yes, we have student demand. But it was important to get a second opinion. And that's where the Scion, that's part of the Scion Group's work. And they'll, I'm sure they'll discuss their methodologies. So that's question number one. And then question number two, how do you finance this? What are the options? How can we finance it so it does pencil out? So it does, it does not create undue cost on the district just in constructing the facility itself? That's what tonight's focus is primarily about. But I'm also mindful of many of the other conversations and points that the board has made, you know? Where, we need to develop policy. How do we, how do we, we'll always have more students demanding housing than we have available beds. How, what are the policies in terms of, you know, priorities? In terms of having students stay with us? There's a myriad of just operational policies, rules, that sort of thing, that we would need to flesh out. We become a 24, you know, 365-24 operation, and that has implications on our own operations. And we know all these things, but that's not what tonight's about. Tonight's really about that first element of student demand and financing. And if the board is interested in continuing the conversation, then we will start bringing that additional information in. Combination of our own in-house expertise, people that have actually done this on other campuses, and perhaps with an outside consultant. And then finally, what are some other alternatives? Are there other alternatives that might be desirable that we should take a look at? And then the thing I'll leave with you with, and then I'll turn it over to Mitch. We recognize that as we deliberate, there are students that have needs right now. And to ignore those needs, to not try to do something to help our existing students while the board goes through this deliberation, that's not the right thing to do. And we've shared with you some of the things, last fall, we shared with you some of the things we've done to help assist students to find housing. That was pre-COVID, post-COVID. I think it warrants further discussion with the board and we'll bring that discussion to you at a later point in time. Certainly, we can hear your opinions tonight on that as well. But I really want to focus on the first element, which is, does this pencil out? Is there student demand? What are the financing mechanisms available? So with that, hopefully, we're calibrated. And what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Mitch Bailey, who will introduce the topic and introduce the folks at Scion Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you, Chancellor. Madam President, members of the board, good evening. A couple of things before I start. First of all, if you hear any snoring in the background, it is not me falling asleep. It is Bernada's dog Rosie. She is a fixture at all of our meetings. She is the rhythm and tempo by which we conduct things. So just be aware of that. If you hear a barking dog, that is mine. I mean, he's overly excited and wants to go do other things. So he calibrates me on that end here. So we're thrilled to bring you this presentation this evening. We promised we'd bring it to you in summer. And I was looking at the calendar and we were under the wire. We're still in the summer month. So we're happy to bring this topic back to you. As the chancellor mentioned, you know, we came to the board last October to talk about a path moving forwards, to recalibrate our conversations on the issue of student housing and to try to get some actual data that would help the board make informed decisions on the issue of student housing. And you authorized us to move forward with a study and bring that back to you at this point in time. And so we have done that. And to help move that forward, we actually created a district task force to assist us in this effort. And I want to recognize my colleagues who have been instrumental in helping with this project. Dr. Jennifer Taylor-Randaza, Dr. Menela Perez, Dr. Micaela Ochoa, Coach Tim Tullock, the wonderful Kathy Blackwood. She is, you know, she can't get very far away from us. And then Chris Drew-Burkrich, our Director of Capital Projects. They've been a great core team, helping us refine and process and evaluate all the different components of the work we've been doing with our consultant, the Scion Group. And but I also want to recognize another group of folks who we convened when we were doing small group meetings and trying to get stakeholder input on the issue. And we convened a group to discuss their direct experiences with students who were experiencing housing and homelessness issues, housing and security issues. And they have provided such valuable input and feedback to us. We've actually sort of made that a standing committee and we continue to draw upon the expertise of that group of faculty and staff who work on the front lines with students every day. And we recognize Michelle Batista, Gwen Kenny, Patrice Reed-Fort, Adolfo Leva, Chad Thompson, Nicole Tiago, Sharon Quack, Yacenia Mercado, Flor Lopez, and Jose Milan, who are representative of all three of our campuses and lots of different program areas, who do a great job every day in serving students. And they provide us some valuable, valuable feedback. And tonight, what we want to do is a presentation sort of in two parts. So the first part will be a full discussion on the results of the, of the demand study. And spoiler alert, there was demand. Not just district-wide, but at all three campuses. And I'll ask our consultants to go into more detail with that for you as well. And then we'll take a pause at the end of that section, if you will, and certainly get all the board's questions on that issue and get clarification. And then we'll move into the second component, which is going to be on what financing options might look like if the board decided they wanted to move forward with the development of such a project. Spoiler alert, it's going to be expensive. And we'll talk through what that looks like in a few moments as well. But I want to quickly walk you sort of through the process we've used to get to where we're at tonight. We had engaged the Scion Group after, with the chancellor referred to, you know, our due diligence and checking with colleagues and others to see, you know, how they have moved forward with this project. I did a site visit personally at Orange Coast College last November and heard first of the Scion Group at that point in time and saw the great work that they were doing on campus. You know, we'd also been in contact with Santa Rosa Junior College and learned about their project and how they've moved forward. And the names kept surfacing up of the Scion Group as someone we should talk to for doing the kind of work that we were looking for, which was to try to really get a pulse on, is there a demand? And how would we, what kind of process would be used moving forward to help process this issue with the board and the broader campus communities? And so with that, we started our work actually back in the spring, sort of January, February timeframe. And we're preparing to, you know, launch a full schedule of activities. And then, of course, you know, March 16th happened and we had to recalibrate based upon that. We did have discussions, just so you know, about whether or not to move forward with the work of the project at that point in time or to halt it. Because, you know, those who do research are mindful of historical events often skew results. But we, we did a full review among our leadership team at the cabinet level and others and determined that we needed to move forward with this project. It was too important that we didn't really have a whole lot of time to spare on this issue because every day we don't, you know, talk about it or can't process it. You know, that's another day a student in need isn't getting that level of permanent service. But also, there are cost factors that go along. You know, the further we go along down the road, as we've seen with all of our projects, the costs go up in our area and we have to be mindful of those things. So we decided to move forward knowing all of that. And so we, working with Scion Group and working with our district research staff, I'm going to give a shout out to Dr. Aaron McVeen and his team, Tracy Wong in particular, our director, District Director of Planning and Research, for their assistance with this project. I believe, as this consultant will tell you, I'm going to keep bragging about this because the data we provided and they said was the best set of data they've ever seen. Cleanest, easiest to use, and that's indicative of how we try to run things. So that's, that's great. So we launched a district-wide survey in the spring, and it was in April, I believe, of all students enrolled at that point in time. So everyone had a chance to participate over a period of a couple of weeks. And we ended up with, you know, I think about 2,500 respondents district-wide. And we received, you know, large enough sample sizes at all the campuses that we were comfortable moving forward with that. So that was, that was very helpful. And then we also conducted a number of stakeholder interviews and group meetings to get some further context, to help contextualize the data. And so we talked to, you know, student government leaders. We talked to, you know, students in various programs who, you know, had experience with general housing issues and some of them had experience with, you know, homelessness and housing and security issues. And then just students who just did the broader campus housing feedback. And we also talked to internal stakeholders. So in addition to the chancellor's cabinet and the vice presidents councils, you know, we also talked with, you know, faculty and staff leaders about the issue as well to get further feedback. And so what you have tonight is a combination of all of those things. And what I want to do now is introduce you to the team we have with us from the Scion Group. First, I want to introduce Anne Volz, who is our, who is the Senior Project Executive. Anne, if you could wave so everyone sees you. Anne is here in California, I believe, somewhere right now. I think she's in maybe Southern California. Ted Richter is the Senior Project Executive, Ted waved. So Ted is based in Washington DC. And I always apologize to him for that, but it's where he's at. Chelsea Medevire is the Director for Scion, Chelsea waved. She's in the Chicagoland area and Chelsea and I sort of are attached at the hip on this. She's been our main point of contact with this project. And then Pete Hoffman is a project manager. Pete is, and Wade, he's also in the Chicagoland area as well. And so with that, I want to introduce the Scion Advisory Services Team. And they will give you a good explanation of who they are and who they work with. But as the chancellor mentioned, you know, we selected Scion because of their vast experience in student housing, which is what they do exclusively and have done for 20 years, and their experience with, particularly, you know, with higher institutions across the country. But in particular with community colleges in California. That was really important to us as we were looking for an advisor on this. And we think we did well in selecting them to help us with this work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, I think, to Anne first. And then she'll introduce the rest of her team again and then kick off a presentation. I will warn the board, so get your popcorn and soda ready. There are some slides we have to go through tonight. I know that we normally don't like to, you know, death by PowerPoint, but there's just some, there's lots of data that we need to make sure that is shared with you and will you be able to see that in a visual representation. So there's, there are a number of slides that we'll go through tonight. But if you have questions as we go along, you know, please, you know, interrupt us and we'll try to answer those as well. But again, there'll also be natural breaks in two segments. First, at the end of the survey results, and then the second, at the end of the financing option. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anne. And Anne, there you go.
Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Two unmute buttons this time. So really appreciate the intro and absolutely appreciate the honor to be in front of all of you this evening. And this is, as you heard from the introduction, this is what Scion does. We are a 20-year-old firm. We are dedicated to campus housing. We have never lost our focus. We were founded as an advisory firm. I met the firm 18 of their 20 years ago. I have worked with them ever since, both at an architecture firm as well as, of course, for the firm. And been doing planning and this type of work, exactly this type of work, for the last 10 years. We opened up our Southern California office, gosh, it's hard to believe, seven years ago. And we opened it up, we were headquartered in Chicago and I had the hard duty of moving from Chicago to Southern California. But we really recognize too, the significant and unfortunate housing insecurity that takes place in our state. And it's hard. And every day, we talk with these students and we hear it. But we also too founded our firm to be as we always are. And that's why we get to stay in business and have our referrals as an objective third-party advisory firm. So we too have to sit in front of sometimes, in front of boards and whatnot, and share that maybe housing is not right for you at this time. And if not, what are potentially other feasible plans? We're an entrepreneurial privately-owned firm. It's two brothers that founded our firm. They founded it when they were 30. One was 30 and one, I think the other guy was 32. And since that time too, they have acquired existing off-campus, purpose-built campus housing. Scion is not a developer. We get confused. I probably get a call every once a week asking me about a development opportunity. That is not what we do. That would 100% conflict too with being a third-party objective advisory firm. So Mitch and Chelsea, I'm not sure if we're going to show a PowerPoint or whatnot during this, but we can or we cannot. But if we can, we might want to show to the map of where we've been fortunate to work. So just as you heard in the introduction too, and I, we just, this is not about us. This is about all of you and your students. But just want to make sure that you realize where all of our work comes from. And that is not just of myself, of course. It's of our Scion team, which is now a team of 1,500. But our advisory group is a team of about 15 people focused in on exactly what we're going to talk about tonight. This map is all work where we've worked or are currently working in the last five years. And as you'll see, a significant amount of our work is with your peers. So we're just, again, very pleased, honored, dedicated. We do continual research for specifically California two-year community colleges. Just before this call, I was on a call with our research manager and looking up what the latest legislation is. I mean, we're trying our hardest to always serve all of you and most importantly, your students. Go ahead. So I don't need to touch on this too long, you heard, but really, what are these housing study goals? Our goal, and what in my very first meeting with Mitch and Jose, was we need to know, as we said, is there demand? And if there isn't, we stop. And our contract is even written such as that. So as you can see, here's the steps we've taken. Mitchell already gave the spoiler alert. So of course, we moved on financial feasibility. And we are not an implementation plan standpoint, but once we are, we want to make sure you have that roadmap of where you need to go from here, which may be a stop or it may be here's how you proceed. Next slide, please. So again, too, I won't spend too much time because we certainly want to get to the meat. But this is very engaged. So a huge, 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 as you heard, shout out to everyone at the district and your students, all of the colleges, for significant participation with us. That's what makes an informed study. So these are the processes we went through and I won't read them for you. They're right here. So next slide, please. And Chelsea, I'm going to turn it over to you, if that's okay.
Thank you, Anne. Good evening, everyone. So at the initial part of our study, it's critically important that we establish strategic objectives for our study. And these strategic objectives really allow us to tie our work, our understanding of your campus throughout our entirety of our process. And we're always able to come back to these goals and these objectives for the project. So first and foremost, we heard very loud and clear that we should approach our work from a social justice framework. And I don't want to use that just as a kind of a, as those words that are frequently thrown around. The reality was what we heard from the campus and what we heard from both students, but as well as campus leadership, was we really need to think about this from an equity and inclusion standpoint. Really need to understand what it means to create a sense of belonging and that the district provides those, that sense of belonging to the college students. And that any housing would need to continue to be an extension of that and really further develop that. So that was first and foremost, what we came, came to our understanding and continuously tie back to. Financial accessibility. We understand financial accessibility and we spoke during our strategic objective session with district leadership, that is both for the campus, for the students, excuse me, as well as for the district. So really, in order for us to address some of those issues of equity and social justice, in order for the district to be able to understand and serve students, most appropriately, housing is only as so useful as it is affordable to students. So making sure that financial accessibility affordability was tied in. So making sure that financial accessibility affordability was tied into that. Student recruitment and retention overwhelmingly, we understand that from both the district strategic plan perspective. But we also understand that from what we heard from students, which is, you know, sometimes it's difficult for me to complete my coursework or to stay focused or really to prioritize school at all because I have everything else that is going on in my life and I am much more than just a student in this moment. And the fact that I have insecure housing or the fact that housing is really costly and expensive does impact my retention. And we'll, we'll see some data points about that later. And the financial neutrality, this really is from a district perspective, which is that really needing to kind of hit and come out net neutral, that we want to create some excessive financial accessibility, but without doing any significant impact, negative impact to the district's bottom line and any financing opportunities there. And that really also again aligns with the institution and the district's strategic plan or, you know, the sound financial planning, et cetera. And then finally, it's an entrepreneurial approach. We heard that it was really important, excuse me, I do live near a train, so I apologize. Really important for the district to take that approach, that that would be creative. We've already seen that you all offer housing. So there's already been an engagement for taking the opportunity and creating change with that. So we really need to keep that focused and that this may not be a one size fits all and think about how housing may or may not advance from a district perspective in a unique approach. In terms of understanding why housing, why now? I think we've heard throughout the introduction, throughout our conversation so far this morning, is that there's no doubt that there is demand and for all of the reasons that you all understand, that we all understand with our work in California, which is high regional housing costs, a dearth of available housing for students. And really what we found through our market analysis was that what is available can vary significantly in age and condition of quality. And some of the other things that students spoke to about were challenges with property management companies or landlords, et cetera. So there's lots of variables that are wrapped into that. On top of that also is transportation. And so if it's transportation to and from class or to and from class to work or making sure they're dropping off a sibling or a parent. And really just what that added level, both in time, but I think also stress and pressure can add to students' concerns and success within the classroom. We asked students, so we want to know on the survey, well, how difficult or easy it is, is it for you to find housing within kind of a reasonably defined commute time? And students told us resoundingly that it's not very easy. So only about 7% indicated that it was, that it was easy with about 37% indicating it was difficult. The remainder were either kind of neither nor or that they didn't have to look for that housing. So that wasn't a concern from them. We spoke earlier about the strategic objective for student recruitment and retention. I think these data points speak for themselves, that students, they're their best judge in terms of what their peers are also experiencing, right? So when we talk to students and when we ask them survey questions, it's really thinking about your experience. But through focus groups, also tell us what you're hearing from your peers, what you know. And from survey data, we learned that both attracting and retaining, students believe that housing is important. They understand the challenges either they themselves are experiencing or their peers. And then we also looked at what does it mean to have housing either for considering leaving housing, excuse me, considering leaving campus because of housing costs? So how directly tie our housing costs to a student's ability to kind of succeed and persist? 39% of students with families and 36% of single students indicated that they've considered leaving campus, so enrolling because of local housing costs. I want to take a moment to stop right here with the students with families and single students. You'll hear us reference that throughout the presentation. And first of all, students with families were defined as individuals on the survey who indicated they live with a partner, a spouse, a dependent, anybody else with whom they are responsible for. So they're not just solely on their own. And of course, single students being those that are solely on their own. And we understand that population and look at that population separately, mostly because of the living situations and styles that are preferred there as well as leasing options such as by the bed or by the unit. Students with families are more likely to want to rent an entire unit than an individual on their own, being more willing to be in shared spaces. And then of course, in terms of student engagement, student engagement and campus activities is frankly a luxury that not all students have the opportunity to do so, especially when we recognize that students aren't just, many students aren't just solely students, right? There, there's so much more to their, their experience and what's happening around them and their support of their family, that not always able to engage in those campus activities. But we also know that engagement in those campus activities increases recruitment and, excuse me, increases retention and success and completion rates. So that's really a key part of that as well. Of course, opportunities to strengthen relationships with community stakeholders and further engagement. And then also understanding what might that engagement be both not only from an on-campus activities perspective, but even just enrolling in a full-time course load or increasing their course load. Because students understandably are always able to take as many classes as they would like when they're balancing other challenges. So that was about 50% of part-time students, single students and 43% of students with families indicated that they would have some willing of interest in enrolling full-time if housing weren't as much of a challenge for them. Anne also mentioned in terms of our goals that we understand housing and the addition of housing under the guise of readiness. So what does it mean to be ready? What does it mean to add housing? As Mitch and Chancellor Claire spoke about earlier, adding housing to a campus really changes, can change the dynamic, truly for the better for students' experience. But we also need to understand whether or not the environment around that is suited to move that forward. And we ultimately determined, yes, both the district and students are ready and excited for that. Does that mean everything's determined, checked, decisions are made? Absolutely not, as we, as we've already established. But it means there's readiness and willingness to move forward. So highly motivated, these are conversations that we've had before. Again, that innovation, we already know about the strength of the support services. We heard over and over again how much wraparound supports are critical to the campus and the colleges and how they function in support of their students. Overwhelming interest and excitement, we heard from students and stakeholders, students and faculty staff saying, we're really glad that this is an initiative. We're really glad that we're taking a deeper dive into this because we hear from our students or we hear from our peers what a challenge this is. And something that really stuck with me from the first meeting, our strategic objective session, was an individual shared that how bringing housing was kind of the missing piece in the college's ability to achieve that equity-focused mission. So to really live into that mission, spoke about the programming for other basic needs that are provided across the colleges, but that housing is kind of that missing central piece. And we know how important that is when we think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Housing is right there at the bottom. And again, students acknowledging just how important that is. And we understood and explored housing at multiple, at all of the campuses. So the way that the survey was orchestrated was understanding the students across the district, if they would want to live in housing at each one of the campuses. To really understand kind of how affluent and mobile students are, but to also understand if, if housing were to move forward, if only one location was chosen, where would that preferred location be? And students were able to select. And the majority came across indicating interest in housing at College of San Mateo. And you'll see that here in this slide. And I know there's a lot going on here, so we're trying to provide a snapshot of information, but also visually represent that. So you can see the yes, maybe, no's at the bottom of each of the columns, which indicate students responding saying, yes, if housing had been available, I would have selected to live there. Maybe, which is maybe I would have. And no, of course, no, I would not have. The bars are separated again by single students and students with families. So the bottom level of the bars is representative of single students and the top students with families. So you can see here that about 40% of single students and 45% of students with families indicated a preference for housing at the College of San Mateo. Now this is from students across the district. So a student could be primarily taking classes currently at Skyline College, but maybe have indicated that College of San Mateo would have been their preferred location. So students really, we were able to open it up and allow them to ask that, to really understand where would be their preferred, preferred location. And that then is carried on in how we inform our demand and how we look at our demand. So as we think about the calculation of demand, we've taken, it was a very high-level overview, really kind of quick snippet of some of the survey information, strategic objectives, the qualitative data that we collected. And ultimately, all of that is filtered into what we call our demand calculation. And we understand demand both as an art and a science. So the science being the data that we've received from the survey, data we've received from the college, our cost tolerance analyses, et cetera. And then the art being what we know, what Scion knows about doing this on campuses across the nation, but especially in campuses in California, on community college campuses and understanding what students' needs are. So in terms of what is considered within our methodology, we're looking at enrollment and familial status. Again, as we talked about that, full-time, single-time, full-time and single students, as well as other data as received from the college, survey data as we've kind of discussed, as well as some other aspects that consider current living situations. As we know that students who are living with families, maybe less likely than students who are already renting to be, to decide to move somewhere else. Or certainly students who own their own homes are going to be exceedingly less likely that to move into college student housing. And then the cost tolerance, which is a critical piece of this and how we understand some of our affordability, which is students are asked to share what they're currently paying towards their, their monthly living expenses. So that's both their housing as well as utilities. And we use that to understand where are some thresholds that students may be able to pay. So you said you're interested, but we also understand that maybe you, you only pay maybe $100 a month towards your living expenses because you live with home and you're just helping out with utilities. And so your likelihood to be able to afford something more expensive is limited. There's some variation there. So we really apply some cost tolerance to understand a student's likelihood. And in our case, in working with the college and the district, we heard again loud and clear that social justice framework. So you'll see in the following slides, we kind of broke that cost tolerance down a bit more and offered a cost tolerance for a discounted rate for our student demand to understand what would that rate look like or how much that demand would be for students who have financial challenges and don't have as many means available to them. All of that is really filtered into what we call that reasonably available market, that RAM, where we understand that these students are those that are most likely to be interested and available to live there. And then we apply some capture rates to get to our projected demand. So our projected demand, this is for single students. And it's really important to reiterate that this is demand across the district, at College of San Mateo, but that this is, or across the district, but at Skyline College or across the district, but at Communityata College. And that these are not cumulative, so it's not 1,800 plus 1,500. These are individual as students were able to select yes, maybe, no to each campus location. So the calculation adjusts for their location preference. So when we think about full-time students and part-time students, that total is about 1,200 beds, again, single students, of demand at College of San Mateo. And as I mentioned a moment ago, we, we factored in a reduced cost tolerance. So we dropped the cost tolerance kind of threshold that we use and say, okay, if housing were available, some housing were available at an even more reduced price point, how many more people might we capture that would be interested in living in this campus housing? And that's what you can see there is that green added. So there would be an additional 580 or so beds of student housing at a reduced cost. And that reduced cost is about 50% of what the listed survey rates were. And Pete will walk through that when he does his financials. So again, just important to recognize that these are individual demand at the specific colleges and not cumulative costs. And then this is the same thing for students with families. And this is really healthy demand on both perspectives, on both single students and students with families. And there is a lot of flexibility. And again, the team will continue to walk through in options, should you want to sign to move forward. There's a strong need and students are demonstrating that through the data that provide a lot of flexibility and options as we move forward. And with that, I'll pass it to Pete.
Thank you, Chelsea. So as Chelsea mentioned, there is healthy demand across the board. And really from a high level for our financial analysis, when we build out our housing programs, we're really trying to tie it to the demand as well as the strategic objectives. So the programs that we tested were at 50% and 25% of total demand. We looked at a variety of unit types, which we'll show in a few slides, the floor plans of these, to see the impact on rates as well as project costs. And from the demand findings, we found that there was significant demand from not only single students, but also family students or students with families. So each housing program that we looked at are intended to serve both cohorts. So both single students and students with families. And our programs are set up to address the students who are experiencing housing insecurity. So each program has 10% of the single beds allocated to be offered at a 50% reduced rate. And we'll kind of get into the financial mechanics behind that in a few slides as well. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we tested a variety of programs. Each program has family housing, which is apartments and it's by the unit. And then we looked at traditional style units and apartment-style units. The idea behind testing it at 50% and 25% of the demand was based on, with such significant demand, it allows for opportunity to kind of get creative with the, with the housing programs. And for example, at Orange Coast College, we've seen that, you know, they had a projected demand of 1,600 students and they, they built a housing facility for 823 students at that. And that's just one example. It's really kind of dependent on, on the institutional goals and policies. The idea behind testing the 25% demand was that there's certain efficiencies that you get with larger programs. So we wanted to test a smaller program, not only as a potential program, but to show the impact on rates and project costs that a smaller program may have. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we tested traditional units and apartment units. The traditional units are your kind of typical dorm-style units at single occupancy and double occupancy on the left. In terms of square footage, these are very efficient units. The single and double occupancy units are 200 square feet per unit. The studios, one bedrooms and two-bedroom apartments. For studios and one bedroom, those, those will be single occupancy. The two-bedroom apartment for single students, we looked at single occupancy and double occupancy. So the two-bedroom double occupancy would serve four students. And the square footage is behind these units. For a studio, we tested it at 350 square feet. For a one-bedroom, we tested it at 450 square feet. And for the two-bedroom, it was 650 square feet and 700 square feet for the double occupancy. Here, this slide's the breakdown of the actual tested program. So based on, on unit type preferences and, and financial implications, we broke it up by, by traditional single occupancy and double occupancy. One thing to keep in mind when looking at the single students' housing programs, that the rental rates will be by the bed. And for the students with families, those rental rates will be by the unit. As we spoke about, we, we heard loud and clear that housing insecurity was, was a huge issue. And, and we really needed to focus on a way to incorporate this into the financial feasibility study and find a solution. study and find a solution. And we were able to, the 10% allocated to discounted rates, that's just kind of a starting point. That's something that we can definitely play with. But we wanted to see how we could incorporate units at a discounted rate and how the project financing would impact that. And what we found was that we were able to incorporate those discounted units without having a huge impact on the survey-tested rates. And by that, I mean, we offer one unit at 50% discount, and the other units kind of make up the gap for that. And the increase needed was between 1.5% and 9%. So that was a really good sign that this, you know, incorporating discounted units was a feasible idea.
And Pete, if I might jump in just real quick before you move on to the next slide, you know, trustees, I will go back to the conversations that we've had in the past, you know, and we have had, you know, various discussions about students who are homeless and who are experiencing housing insecurity, and making sure that whatever solution we would come forward with would be able to factor that population of students in. We know their needs are immediate, they're real, they are significant. And so we have done, you know, surveys in the past, trying to calculate what that actual student population looks like. And so we did our student survey, I believe back in 2018. We saw about a 5% response rate for students who said they were experiencing some sort of a housing insecurity or homelessness. And we asked a specific survey question in the instrument used for this survey, and it came back around 2% of students who were experiencing housing insecurity or homelessness. So we wanted to make sure that that population was embedded in any financial analysis of this project, because we know as a population, we're definitely going to want to recommend to the board that we serve at the outset of this. So we want to make sure that they're calculated in this from the get-go. And as Pete mentioned, you know, depending upon whatever number we decide, we can adjust that ratio and test other models to see what will work. But we definitely want to make sure that those students are not lost in this conversation, although they're in our forefront as we move forward. Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, thank you, Mitchell. Chelsea, you can go to the key assumptions. So all of our financial projections are kind of founded in a set of key assumptions, and there's more to it, but these are really the key assumptions that we've used. And we make sure to take a conservative approach pretty much across the board. As Mitchell mentioned, that we've had significant experience in the California community college space. The hard costs are based on previous and ongoing work, and those hard costs are really the driver behind the total project costs, which is a huge part of the financial feasibility testing. So I won't go through all of these in detail. This is definitely something that we can and we should circle back on in the questions. But outside of the project costs, we've set it up so that it is assumed project delivery in fall of 2025. So all of these founding assumptions have been escalated to fall of 2025 numbers. So for the rental rates for each program, on the left, Program 1 is the traditional program. We broke out the rental term by academic year and annual year. So on the survey, one of the questions that was asked was, would you prefer an academic year, which is typically nine months, or an annual term lease? The results primarily showed that the annual term lease was the most preferred lease term. So the way we have it set up for the traditional program is that 75% of the leases are based on an annual term, and 25% are based on the academic nine-month term. As you can see, it's broken out by traditional single occupancy and traditional double occupancy, and the bottom two rows represent those 50% reduced rates. For the students with families, those are all based on per-unit rates. And something interesting that we found with the 50% compared to 25% of demand, as I mentioned, there are certain efficiencies with a larger housing program, and you can see the impact on rates. So if you look at the, on Program 2 and 3, the, for instance, the studio rate is at 1,856 per month, and that receives almost an $80 increase by shrinking that program size. And typically, the biggest efficiencies that we see in a larger program is in the operating expense space. Next slide, please. So for the total project costs, the key driver is the gross square footage. So the traditional programs have the most efficient unit types and produce a smaller, more efficient unit or project size. And when you look at the estimated total project cost, that's based on that $505 hard cost figure, but it also incorporates soft costs, which is about 20% of the hard costs, as well as financing costs, which is about 15% of the hard costs. You can see that the apartment programs, so the Program 2 compared to Program 1, obviously the apartment units are going to be larger units, more square footage, and that shows in the total project costs. One thing to keep in mind with that gross square footage is it's not just the residential space that we factor in. We also build out specific common area programs for each program, as well as we include a gross-up factor, which factors in things like circulation space and vertical penetrations. So the gross square footage is really the total square footage of the building, not just the residential space. And for the housing cost comparisons, we do an off-campus market analysis, and we look at the median weighted average rental rates. And the median weighted average includes things like utilities. So for, on the column furthest to the left, that studio rate of 2,568, that is not just the rental rate, that also includes utilities. And that's kind of our compass for setting our survey rate, or our survey-tested rates. Typically, you know, we'll run financial analysis just to make sure that we're testing feasible rates. And then, once we get to the financial analysis part, we'll retest those. And what we found was that the feasible rates are all in line or lower than the off-campus And Chelsea, I believe I'm sending it back to you.
Thank you, Pete. So as we mentioned at the very beginning with the strategic objectives, we want to make sure that we always tie back what our studies found to those strategic objectives. So of course, understanding retention and success and student engagement, what we just know about student housing is that it promotes that. So it promotes those retentions, increases average GPA, graduation rates, et cetera, contributes towards that academic and social engagement. But we also know that students experience improved peer interactions, increased diversity of experience in who they're living with and who they're proximate to, enhance campus pride and affinity because of their experience becomes fully centered even more within the on-campus experience. So again, just the recognition of those benefits, which we're all quite familiar with. And then in terms of kind of wrapping up the first piece, the first part of our presentation, as we shared earlier, we recognize that there's strong student demand for below-market-rate housing, as Pete shared, and showed where those lined up, that all of those programs, there are some, several potential programs that both align with demand, so align with what students told us that they wanted, and that would support multiple student populations. And again, that multiple student populations is looking at those single students and students with families, and really recognizing those are serving different needs and those are creating different experiences. Of course, those operational efficiencies, as Pete mentioned, and noting that all of those tested rates indicate both financial viability and that due to the size of them, even at that 50% of demand, would likely garner significant interest from the development community. And finally, and then most importantly, as we think about that, is that as we run them at this point, each of the programs does offer about 10% of the single student beds to be offered at reduced rates. But again, as Pete shared, we really can play with those numbers and understand in order to suit exactly what the district's objectives are as we move forward.
So.
Go ahead. And I was just going to say that, you know, with this, you know, and trustees, we talked about, you know, location in the past being, you know, a consideration. And in talking with Jose Nunez and his team, you know, as we undertake this next round of master planning, you know, this is certainly on the forefront of, you know, location that we would build into the master planning process. You know, we've talked about the population considerations that we would put in place as to who would have access to live, to be able to live in those developments should we move forward. And certainly, we've talked, you know, heavily about making sure that our underserved marginalized populations have access, as well as the students who are housing and housing insecure and have homelessness issues. But we have a capacity to explore, you know, what those other populations might look like as well. Certainly, there are financial considerations both on the district side and on the student side. The number you just saw a few moments ago is a bit of an eye-opener. But as we've had conversations in the past about costs of construction in the Bay Area, the most recent briefing, I believe, the board received was in January from Jose and Chris, you know, we still think, you know, one of the most expensive places in the nation, and one of the most expensive spots on the planet to build things. And we don't see that changing, unfortunately, anytime soon, which is why you saw the price escalators with that. Affordability concerns are always top of mind. You know, as we scoped this discussion with Cyon, it was in the context of the district's social justice mission, you know, our equity mission, our inclusion mission, you know, making sure that, you know, we are incorporating our anti-racism principles, you know, in this work. And we have to make sure that we do not artificially put up additional barriers on affordability for students who need access to a project like this. So that's, again, top of mind, and things that we can work through. The scenarios that have been presented thus far tonight are ones that we sort of scoped to give a broad context of the issue. But as the Cyon team has mentioned, we can go back and we can, they can run any model we want. So if we want to give them different scenarios or different percentages or different targets to hit, they can do that. Keeping in mind that everything, you know, everything has an effect. You take with one side, something else is going to get adjusted on the other. So at the end of the day, we want to make sure it's, we don't, you know, over-saturate, you know, with certain populations of students and have a district commitment where we end up pricing other students out of the opportunity to stay with us as well. And then we'll talk about, you know, timeline and delivery methodology and approvals and other things at later point in time. We don't have to get into those at this meeting because I don't think we're at that point. As the chancellor mentioned, we, staff does not have recommendations for you tonight about moving forward. This simply was pure informational sharing and trying to put questions on the table for you to ask questions you have. Because we know you have plenty, and we want to be able to address those, and we know we'll have lots of homework to follow up on tonight in going back and getting those questions answered. So I'll turn it back over to Ann now, and then I think this is probably close to our natural first stop. We'll call it the end of Act 1, and then, and certainly, we're entertaining the questions the board may have. So Ann, you finish up, and then I think we're probably due for a time here.
Absolutely. And because we are due for a time, I think what we might want to do, exactly like you say, and we can go to the next slide, but really is the second half, where we really want to talk about delivery methods. So it's just like you shared, I think we're at a good breaking point, if you still agree. So I'm not sure if you want to take a break right now, or, okay?
No, I think our break is, the team will stop talking, we'll make sure that the board has a chance to weigh in, provide comments, thoughts, ask questions about what they've seen thus far, because there's a lot of material we've covered, and there's still lots more to cover, and I don't want you to have to wait till the very end to remember all those things you had questions about. So, Madam President, I would, we would entertain the board's questions to this point.
I don't, I can't see Maurice on my screen, so I'm just going to start with who I see. Are there questions from board members? Oops, there we go. Hello, Richard Holiver.
Yeah, it's a lot of material. Appreciate it. But it's, you know, it's a lot to try to absorb. I have just a couple of questions. And on the survey, when you got to the demand numbers and you broke it down for each of the three colleges, I'm not sure if I heard correctly, but if I heard correctly, you were saying you don't add the CSM demand plus the Skyline plus the Cuyahoga to get to total demand. It's just, people would say, I'm good at all three, or some would say, I'll only do housing at one of these two, or only one. Is that, do I have that right?
Yes, you have that correct. The cumulation is between students, single students and students with families within that one campus location. But the demand assumes that as somebody who has maybe said yes to College of San Mateo would also be potentially considered in the number for Skyline if they indicated maybe for Skyline, so not to add them across.
If you didn't duplicate those numbers, do you have some rough number of what the entire district-wide total demand would be?
Pete, how would you think about that in terms of your model?
So I think because the question was worded for, you know, willingness and interest to live at a certain housing location, I don't think it would be, it would statistically be accurate to combine them all, because I don't believe that we asked a multiple housing location question.
Yes, I guess similar to my question as well, so I kind of answered my question totality, but it was similar, trying to figure out the demand and making sure that we are focusing on our most needy students. I know, I thank you all, I know Mitch mentioned it's the social justice lens that we're looking, and also saying that we don't want to let those students in conversation, but it's really that those students actually trying to figure out versus students that would just like the experience of having a dorm life.
Is that a question or a statement? Ann, you're going to take that one?
Sure, I am happy to.
If there's an answer, yeah.
Don't worry, I chopped up a little bit, but I think I understand the part of your question. So, but correct me if I didn't hear it correctly. Is we, going back almost to a little bit to the previous question that we had by Richard, is we looked at demand, and as Pete mentioned, our survey and all of our analysis and our models, looked at all three campuses, and then we narrowed it in. So we could probably go back and do a different demand model to just get what that demand is, but we ran those models very different on those capture rates and whatnot, dependent upon the campus. In further conversations with the district and the colleges, there was an extreme focus on students that are experiencing student housing insecurity. And we were requested And we were requested to, which made a lot of sense per what the goals are, as that Chelsea shared earlier, to include further demand from those students that might not have those cost tolerance that Chelsea mentioned earlier when we're doing our demand methodology. And so therefore, when we looked back at students that might not fit in that category, of course, logically, it increases your demand. So after that exercise, we ran further models that tested, can we accommodate these students? Sure, they're interested, but you also frankly, too, have to build a building that we saw those construction costs, project costs are significant. So to attract interest or even sell your own bonds, we ran those models, as Pete mentioned, to include that extra demand and ran those rents for 10% of the students at 50% of the market rate rents that you saw, market rate meaning trying to be as affordable as possible. So Maurice, I don't know if that got to what you were looking for, but wanted to share how we did the modeling and happy to answer a further question if you have one, of course.
No, I definitely understand that, you know, obviously, if the question wasn't asked, it'd be hard to just, you know, make it up as we go now. So I appreciate that, but I also appreciate the fact that we can, as Peter said, that we can go back and, you know, if we wanted to go with the 10% or go higher or play with those numbers, that we can bring back different models. So, you know, thank you.
Trustee Menelker.
Let me make sure I'm not muted. Yes, thank you. I've got really three questions. The one that just came up was following on from Trustee Holiver and Trustee Goodman. You know, I get that it's kind of difficult to ask this because in a sense, you know, if you ask, who would like free ice cream on a sunny day, you're going to get an overwhelming response. And I think in the Bay Area, if you say, well, you know, would you like a reduced-rate apartment, everyone's going to say yes. I mean, who wouldn't, right? And so I understand why you kind of have to factor in the demand calculation based on something close to a market rate pricing. But again, I think our concern is really serving those students where we know they can't compete or, you know, for a room at that market rate, so that's the issue. They can't afford those market rate housing. So I'm a, you know, sort of this quandary in this, and I think my colleagues are trying to get to this as well, is of the demand we're looking at, how many of them are really are students who can afford another option, but they really just like the idea of living in a dorm on campus rather than living at home or living in an apartment somewhere else or whatever? And how much of this is actually serving the need of students who have no other housing option, who are really, you know, their other alternative is they have to move somewhere else, or they're sleeping in their car, or they're packed 10 to an apartment or whatever? And is offering a dorm room or an apartment-style room at market rate or 10% below market rate really going to address that need? So I don't know if that's, if that question is clear or not to you, what I'm trying to get across, but I think that's kind of maybe the issue that several of us are wrestling with right now.
Yeah, you bring up a great point. I mean, when you do the demand and have a cost tolerance that's at market rate, that doesn't do anything to solve the issue of housing insecurity. And when we drop the cost tolerance to 50% below market rate, there's a whole new pool of students that came into the demand. Our task now is basically, how do we make that a financeable project? There's going to be demand. How can we play with the numbers to potentially increase the allocation of 10% of single beds to 15% or 20%? And that's something that we can definitely model. But at the same time, is it going to produce a financial viable project? So it's kind of playing with those levers because when you include more students at a lower discounted rate, then we're going to have to bump up the, those other unit types to accommodate and make sure that the project's reaching financial requirements that would be in a public-private partnership. So it's kind of playing around with the financial levers to try to include as many students suffering from housing insecurity as possible, but also making sure that we have a financially feasible project. Did that answer your question, or?
Well, I think, yes. I think it's sort of framing it in a way that I can understand and it gets into the next thing, which is, so you were looking at this through the lens of financial feasibility as a public-private partnership. And I know we haven't even gotten to the discussion of the three different methods yet that you're bringing up next. But I guess maybe when we get to the end of that discussion, getting some sense of, well, if we didn't do the public-private partnership model, if we said, for example, the district will finance the entire thing and run it ourselves, or we'll just go off and have it done independently, does that change sort of the viable project configuration? Because if I may, this is kind of getting into two other questions I had about the configurations you've got. One is, and I know this was driven by your financial viability model, is you're talking about pretty big projects here, you know, 250,000 square feet, serving, you know, 900 to 1,000 students, something like that. That's really for a district that's never run student housing before, that's kind of jumping into the deep end of the pool right away. And that, to me, is a little bit of, I wouldn't say that it would be completely infeasible, but it is a bit of a scary proposition. So I'm just curious about your thoughts and your experiences with districts that have never done housing before. Is this typically how they start with 250,000 square foot projects and 1,000 students? Or does it make more sense to figure out, is there a way to start with a 150 or 300 student project and get a little bit of experience under our belt before we jump into dealing with 1,000 students living on campus?
So excellent questions, for sure. And we couldn't agree with you more that it's a significant project. And we work with, as you saw, several districts, and they're certainly not all this big, of course. So we modeled about 50% of the demand overall, trying to go as conservative as we can. Now, we'd have to run different models, and it's absolutely, of course, something we can do. It also, too, we have to always look at that affordability factor. I'm not saying that bigger always means lesser rents, but there are tipping points that come along in doing the models. There are even tipping points, too, with your construction. You go all of a sudden from five-story to six-story, you have a big swing. So land is one of those key considerations is site location. But absolutely, we can certainly look at a smaller program than what you saw and happy to test what those rents would be for the students if they're still able to accommodate that 10%. Or maybe, like you say, too, we may be able to accommodate even more, and we're certainly happy to test for that. So we're working with a community college, not in our state, but in a different state right now, and they had the exact same concern that you did, and they went with a smaller program. And that RFQ is actually out right now for a P3 developer. So that, as Mitchell said, too, that is certainly a lot of decisions to be made, and they don't need to be made, of course, on this call. I don't think that's the purpose of this meeting whatsoever, just an informational. So if we should be running different models or testing smaller programs, we're happy to do so.
And Trustee Menelker, I had one other thing, you know, and certainly, you know, this is not only the number of beds and apartments and the size, square footage, and the cost of this project is big. I mean, it is, no other term is big. And so when we were talking to Cyon about this, trying to keep in mind, too, that we had definitely, you know, a population we wanted to make sure got served, which is our, you know, homeless and housing insecure students with this, too. So the more of those students we have in a complex, you know, we've got to make sure that the ratio is still penciled out there. So when we asked them to model this, that was the one where the cost for the other unit didn't go so far off the charts that it still made it possible for those students to be able to buy in as well. But, you know, if we add more, if we have a smaller project and more students who are getting a discounted rate, then we have, you know, financial, other financial considerations that we'll have to take into account to make it work, both for the financing of it, however we decide to do that, and then also for the actual rents themselves for those students who are going to be paying the non-discounted rate.
And I would just add really quickly onto that, Mitch, thank you, that the beauty of part of the ways that we calculate our demand does allow for us to be able to use those levers and understand different rents and accommodation of students, additional students that are housing insecure or homeless at a lower price point, while still being able to calculate and feel confident in our demand numbers, that those that are still left in that reasonably available market can then pay those rents that are there. So again, all of those things that we can remodel and test, but the way that our demand analysis works, it allows us to have some of that confidence there that's needed.
Trustee Menelker, is that?
Yeah, it was very helpful. I think we'll, you know, obviously have more discussion around this when we come to discussing next steps and guidance and where we go from here. I did have one more question on a different topic, if I might. So in talking and going to, you know, several conferences on student housing and talking to colleagues at other college districts that are, you know, addressing the same issue or have addressed in the past, some advice that I had gotten was not trying to do a project that combined different student needs, you know, not trying to combine students with families and apartment-style units in with classic dorm rooms for single students and things like that. And I'm just curious, your recommendation was for a mixed-use complex that did accommodate both in a variety of different things. I'm just curious on your kind of take on that, and obviously, you've done this a lot, advised a lot of other districts, so I, you know, value your expertise and opinion on why you think combining populations is the right thing to do as opposed to targeting, you know, in a specific development, a certain type of student or housing situation?
So great question. And in conversations, too, we are, in all of our work, too, we're trying to accommodate absolutely the student housing insecurity. That is a very big driver. We're also trying to accommodate as many of your students as we can, and that's definitely a district decision, not a Cyon decision. And so our models, our surveys, et cetera, were set up, as Chelsea mentioned, too, that we can go back, we can never change the integrity of the data, we can certainly analyze different aspects. So if we certainly, if you all direct us and say, really, really want a first-year student population, for example, to live here, or let's say you really want a student with a family or student with dependents, just that's all we want to serve in this Phase One, almost similar to what you've done with your faculty-staff housing, that's different, but that's the cohort you chose to address. We can absolutely take that demand, decipher it out for those different cohorts. As you would probably expect to understand, is typically that younger student is looking more for a traditional residential life experience. As they get older, and of course, certainly students with families, they require more that apartment, more independent-style living. So their floor plans, as we can see, are different. So we, our models are reflected to show a diverse student population, but we can absolutely, as I said in the beginning, to address a certain cohort upon district direction and relative to the demand.
I guess maybe I didn't make my question particularly clear. It wasn't so much whether you could do the analysis or, you know, what we were asking for. I guess my question was more of, I'm not sure we know what we're asking for. And I'm just curious about, based on what, you know, I've heard anecdotally from other districts versus what you recommended, I was just curious on, you know, the rationale for a multi-tenant or multi, you know, type of student building as opposed to single-purpose and, you know, multiple different single-purpose complexes, and what your experience has been and why you recommend this way versus the other way.
So thank you for clarifying that. So you raise an excellent point, and definitely, any residence life expert agrees with you, including myself. It is very uncommon, and I don't think I could sit here on this call ever and recommend that you put students with families and an 18-year-old side by side. In very urban environments, sometimes that can be done, but it's definitely never advisable for all the obvious reasons. And it's just a different student experience. Those academic outcomes that you're looking to achieve, they're different when you have a first-year, second-year traditional residential life experience, or if you're really looking for more to, that you're a single parent with two dependents. So there are design, that becomes a design solution. It's been in public record, we're actually serving as their advisor in Napa Valley College. We did their study and did those separately. And my vision of it as well, and Pete and Chelsea, you've been to campus several times, with me and Ted, you were also on several calls, was I, we envisioned it as two separate sides of the campus, if they ever did these together. And they've been working on a design solution where actually they're accommodating the two cohorts into one development with very clear separation, that we are not architects, we do not claim to be architects, but from a residential life perspective, absolutely would say on this call that you do want to separate those cohorts in some very meaningful, purposeful way. So I agree with what you've heard from other people in the industry.
Okay, so what you're recommending, okay, I'm sorry. So what you're saying, you're saying this multiple thing, is you're actually saying, well, maybe one development project, but it would be like different buildings or designed in a way that there would be a separation of those students in that project?
Absolutely.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Richard, Oliver?
Yeah, I think I'm just wanting to get a little more information, you know, based on the experiences you've had in California, elsewhere, with the family housing, because that seems like it's more complicated. We're not just dealing with, you know, a student, they go to college, they leave college, they leave the housing, they go on with their lives. The impacts include, you know, schools that have to serve children. Those schools typically, I think, would expect to get developer fees and other revenues because, you know, we are now not just covering our own needs, but we're having impacts in the larger community. And that's just the first that comes to my mind, there probably are others. And then also, I would assume, same deal, you're a full-time student or whatever, you know, whatever our parameters are that qualify you, when you're no longer meeting those qualifications, you're no longer entitled to that housing. First, am I correct about that? And, you know, how do families deal with that? It seems like that's just a different, bigger, you know, bigger issue for a family than just for someone who's on their own. When they're done, they're done. When they're done with the college, they're done with the housing. Could you talk about how that's worked out elsewhere?
Absolutely. So first of all, I agree with everything you've said, that it's very different and absolutely it is more complicated because we are dealing more with it. Like you exactly said, more than with just that student, you might be dealing with a two- and a four-year-old. That's a much different aspect. So there are several considerations that go into that, and they get a lot into the design. Obviously, too, as Pete mentioned earlier, too, it's even a different rental. You're now renting the whole unit, you're not renting the bed. That changes the economics, actually, typically sometimes gets a little harder. So, and Chelsea, I know you've spent a lot of time, too, in different aspects related to family housing, so maybe you could add on a little bit to this?
Absolutely. It's absolutely different. I mean, I think, as you mentioned, there's the considerations that families have for the safety and security of their children. Is there a play, is there enough play area? What does the traffic around that look like? I mean, there are multiple things on which you have to begin to consider. But I think, you know, as we think about what student population are we, is, does the district desire to serve? Or are the students that indicated that they wanted it most? And is it feasible to create a project that has those design elements and creates that which we know can create that separation? Those design factors can be in there, but ultimately, it's about probability for the district and the objectives and kind of the ideas and general directions that you all would want to take that, recognizing that, yes, it is additional work and it is additional risk and there are additional liabilities and concerns, but you're serving a greater number of student population and that students with families can sometimes be the ones that are most challenged by finding housing. And I certainly have plenty of data and we can provide more of that to kind of dig a little bit deeper, and I apologize, I can't immediately recall off the top of my head. But we can understand whether or not that ease of experience of finding housing or their satisfaction in their housing situation and the nuances between those student populations. And so I think, again, that goes back to kind of all of those factors that are tied into that, that ultimately become a district-driven decision.
Okay. Trustee Menelker. Okay. Justin Mankin?
Yeah, so I think that's an excellent question that you just raised, and maybe as a next-step item, which is, if we approach this from our perspective, which I think is our board's perspective, that we're trying to help our most vulnerable students and those that are most impacted by the high cost of housing in San Mateo County that's interrupting their educational process. Do we know what the profile of those impacted students are? Are they parents with children? Are they single parents with children? Are they the, you know, single first-time college student who has no family and they're here for two or three years, if they're a full-time student, then moving on? I think that would be very helpful to know, because I think that would help answer some of these questions about what should the focus of this project be. And then, and I guess my follow-on question is, if it is more of the family situation, you know, I think there's been kind of, in the question, some assumption, it's a single parent with children, but what if it's not? And this is probably something you've had to deal with in other projects as well. You know, if we have a family where one parent is, or even if not children, it's just a couple, but one is a full-time student, but the other is a Google programmer or something making $250,000 a year or something, that doesn't sound like the sort of the family unit that we're trying to serve in our, in our housing projects. So I'm just curious of what you've seen. Is there typically means testing in these developments, or some way of screening out, you know, the other half of a couple that's not the student to make sure that we're not just offering some, you know, low-cost housing benefit for people that have other options available to them?
So, two answers, and they're related, I promise, is, we can absolutely follow up with more detailed data on exactly, too, when you're talking about that family student, it would be, take a little time on this call. So the other part too, is in our survey too, we asked about, what is your total household income? We try to get to those answers that you're talking about, to really find out. Because one thing too, it helps us to understand if one student maybe is a full-time student with hardly any rental tolerance, can whoever their significant or their partner is, can that help? So that total household income question, we try and too, that's one of those factors too, that goes into the, to the demand analysis. Fortunately, from our, at least I've been in this for a while, and so have my colleagues, I haven't really seen too many, let's beat the system. That could happen, you raise a good point, but we haven't, at least from, and I'm just talking about my own professional experience, but that of Cyon too, that I'm aware of. I've never heard of, oh, we've got a big problem here. We've got a lot of students that are just taking advantage of this housing. So we, that's a great point. We would have to make sure that there's management processes, resident application processes, and so forth. This is not an income qualification project. It doesn't work like affordable housing tax credits. So that lever is not there for us to pull. So, but we would have to, those are really good detailed nuances that we'd need to work through. But sure, I know I didn't answer your question the first time, because I need to pull up the data, but I hopefully the latter part shared how we do try and essentially make sure we're serving the students that are most desirable in the strategic objectives.
Any formal income qualification is typically dependent on that financing use for the project. And so, you know, were the district to move ahead in a more robust manner, would try and service more in deeper levels of affordability with regard to its stakeholders, it would be a program we would have to conceive up on our own and sort of stand up to qualify those residents.
Okay. Vice President Norris?
Yes. First of all, thank you to everyone that's presented up till now, sharing the information that you've had. It helps us understand the situation a little bit better. I think that the questions that my colleagues have been asking has helped us now hone down to a little bit sharper look at what we really need to look at. And obviously, the issue of providing housing to people that have need is something that's, you know, nothing new. There is affordable housing that is out there, you know, that is, you know, that is provided by cities and things. I'm not suggesting that that is going to solve our problem, but usually, I mean, housing like that is something that people are looking at long-term, and therefore, you know, qualified people, they get in, they live there long-term. We are, we are looking at a short-term type of a housing situation. And I don't think that we are looking at people staying for more than two or three years max. And so it's important for me to understand the family situation, how that works. If you have a couple with maybe one child, I mean, the units probably would have limits on how many occupants could be in them. And so you have a couple that's there with one or two children, and by the end of the year, there's a third one on the way. So what happens? Do we throw those people out? I guess I need to know, not so much just the statistics about numbers and crunching it. I'd like to see some, some information from other schools, from other colleges that are actually running these programs, and being able to show us how they operate them, what are the problems that they run into, and how they deal with them. Because, I mean, I don't want us to be in a situation where then we become a landlord and we have too much time focusing just on being landlords, and then having to deal with the problems of being landlords, and then having people have to leave who don't qualify anymore. I need to kind of see if we can see some real-life examples of other colleges that have been doing this like us, and hearing what they have to say.
Absolutely. We can put that together as a follow-up.
Okay. I think we might be ready to move on to the next part. Chancellor Bailey?
We're ready for Act Two.
Act Two.
So hopefully, you got, hopefully you got your popcorn and your drinks in the intermission there. And so we are ready to talk about financing models based upon the cost analysis and projections that Cyon has presented to you this evening, realizing that is a very large number. No matter which number you pick, it's a big number. And so we want to talk through what options the district might have, should we decide to move forward with such a development, knowing that that kind of investment is at such a significant level that we may need to explore other methods or means that we haven't used before. So with that, I'm going to turn back over to Cyon, and I'm not sure if somebody, you lead the offer, Ted?
Well, just to, I'm going to hand it over to Ted in one second here. So, looking at the clock, we have scheduled 18 more minutes. Are we, should we be adhering to that? And if that, we need to go through quickly?
No, we're, we're here as long as we need to be here generally.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, Ted, I think you can really walk us through this, if you don't mind.
Sure. Well, since we don't have to adhere, I'll take an extra 20 seconds and just say, Mitch always gets into the business about living in DC, but as a former government official of our fair city, and as the spouse of an elected official in our city, I would like to invite all of you to come and visit our lovely city. It really is beautiful when you get out of the federal core and into the neighborhood. So, as much as I love visiting the Bay Area, I love to host friends even more, so look me up. So, with that, let's hold forth into the wonders of project finance. You know, really, at its core, in public-private partnership, is something that gets overused a bit. But really, you know, the idea behind it is trying to combine the best of both worlds. It's trying to combine the control of, you know, the institutional-led project with the risk deferral and value capture of a private project. And kind of what's happening is it's trying to meet in the middle and take the best of both worlds, and trying to create an optimal situation for a public or institutional entity to, you know, create value for its stakeholders, you know, defer as much risk as possible to the private sector, but still, you know, be able to maintain control over major project decisions. So this is kind of a step ladder of that kind of process, from, you know, the bottom left of really just doing your typical DBB project, you know, district issuing its own bonds and retaining all its necessary service providers from general contractors to architects and so forth, and using its own internal capacity to run that project, all the way through to the, to the top right, which would be, you know, purely privately-led projects on developer grounds, with developer financing and risk margins and profit margins. And then essentially turning around and turnkeying that, almost like an availability payment to the, to the district, and saying, you know, pay me X per year for 10 or 15 years, and we'll give you full access to the project. So really, what we're trying to do is find that fine line in the middle, where we can really take the best of both worlds. Next slide. So really, this, you know, you're familiar with this model. If the district were to choose to proceed, and by the way, this, you know, there's no single, you know, silver bullet to any problem, right? We've identified some, some goals and objectives, and really what we're trying to find here is the best way to deliver on those goals and objectives, in the most cost-effective and the most risk-mitigated way. So, you know, you're familiar with the traditional model. Say the district were to want to go out and build 1,000 units of housing on its own. You'd issue the debt, you would, you know, again, retain all your own, you know, service providers. You would be able to have ultimate control over everything, right down to the color of the brick on the building. You'd be able to essentially pay $150 or $200 million for the project, and you could, at your discretion, you know, make 80% of the units affordable at 25% of the rate that would be charged to actually return that money. It's all up to you. You know, with that, you're also taking on the financial obligation of repaying that, those bonds. You're also, you know, taking that hit from an accounting perspective, and you're taking all the risk. But with all the risk comes all the control. Next slide. Actually, go two slides forward, and let's talk about the privately-owned model. You know, this is where essentially, so one more slide forward. So this is essentially where, say the district were to go to the private market and say, no, go back. Thank you. And say, we want 1,000 beds. A developer might come to you, or several developers might come to you and say, hey, I've got a piece of land right adjacent to campus. I can build you 1,000 beds, give me a 20-year master lease, so I can go out into the private financing markets and secure financing for the project. So essentially, the district is really not taking any risk beyond the payment of that lease, but also is really not in a position to control major decisions of the property. Were the property to be in distress, the district wouldn't be in any position to essentially guarantee that the tenants of that building continue to be district stakeholders, or that the building in and of itself was really an asset to the district community. Because at the first sign of distress, the owner could, could choose to tenant the building out otherwise. You know, or really what you're talking about is taking on the combined accelerated accounting and balance sheet hit of a 20-year master lease. And also what you're doing is, whereas the district's own model should produce the lowest cost of funds, and ultimately, in all truthfulness, the lowest rents to your stakeholders, the developer-led model is going to produce the highest cost to your stakeholders, because it's essentially taking private cost of funds and layering on risk and profit margins from a third-party developer. So actually, go back one more to the P3, and here's what the P3 model is essentially trying to accomplish. It wants to lay off the obligation and the risk to the project itself. Typically, the owner of the improvements, which would be placed on district land under a ground lease, would be liable for the repayment of that debt. And essentially, the security for the debt is project revenues. But the district can control how those revenues are realized, how rents are adjudicated from year to year, and how the project is operated in relation to the district. Also, with relation to a lot of these funding vehicles, we can create tenant waterfalls that make sure that the project doesn't lose its character in terms of being a resource for stakeholders of the district, all the way from students to faculty and staff, to district stake, to visiting scholars, what have you. So there's a lot more opportunity for the district to control it without the obligation of repaying that debt. Now, typically, in this, in this market, investors in the bond issued from these projects like to see district involvement. It helps with underwriting the credit of the project, and it typically reduces the cost of the bond. So while we can limit your debt and balance sheet impact, there are some typically some credit supports from the district, but also it defers the bulk of that risk to a private party, all while maintaining control and character of the building. It's not perfect, it's not the silver bullet. When done right, it does, I think it accomplishes the goals and objectives very well. When done poorly, it can be, it can, when done poorly, it can be, you know, like any bad real estate deal, a bad real estate deal. But that's what Cyon works to, works to prevent. And actually, I'm losing connectivity now, but go to the, go to the comparison chart, please. And I'm not going to go through the specifics of each and every one of these cells, but what I'd like to go do is go down the project features slide, and hopefully my computer will catch up with me. I'm glad I patched in on the phone for audio, and it's taking its time. I apologize. There are many devices on my Wi-Fi.
Ted, I just want to, you want the chart, correctly structured?
And I can, absolutely.
Anne's going to have to take over, I apologize.
Absolutely. Nope, no problem at all. That's living in DC, huh? But absolutely. So, as you can see here too, and this is, there's a lot of detail, so I certainly will not go through, but this really is a summary and compares the three delivery structures that Ted just mentioned. So of course, if you want to pass a measure or go out with your own bonds and do your own self-finance, you have all control, you have all the risk. The P3 is a middle ground that several schools choose to take. There are financing costs that are included, so therefore your rents are going to have to be a little bit higher to cover those financing costs. You also too, as I'll show you in a slide that we'll get to very quickly, is a lot of that risk, as Ted mentioned, in fact, most of it, if you choose to structure it as such, beyond reputational risk, which is not small, at least all financing risk sits in the project. And you get significant levels of control that are written through the documents to make sure that you're involved in, very much in control of that student experience on your campus. And then, of course, too, as Ted mentioned, you can absolutely take the least risk and have a private developer, and from the demand numbers that you have, you'll have interest. But you do lose a lot of that control, and not saying that it's the, schools choose to go this way, there's nothing wrong with it. It's actually a viable option for several schools as well, that really do almost want more of an arms-length agreement. In a very, in an off-campus purpose-built, actually too, Fair Housing even comes about. It doesn't happen too often, but that housing too does need to open to the entire population, even beyond the student population. In the P3 and the self-finance, in the P3 required, and you would, I'm sure, want to do, and the self-finance, to a resident that is somehow affiliated with the district or the college or some type of educational use. You can go to the next slide. So, not advocating the public-private partnership, absolutely just hoping this is education and promotes some questions when we get to the end of this section, is just, you know, in summary, that public-private partnership, it does bring with you a developer, an architect, a constructor, and sometimes a manager, and of course, a financing entity. And I say sometimes a manager, because the school too can elect to manage the property as well, if you'd like to. There, as I mentioned, that ownership of that property, you are working with a private developer. But to qualify for this type of financing, the owner needs to be a not-for-profit entity. But to qualify for this type of financing, the owner needs to be a not-for-profit entity. And that could be, there's several that are set up across the country just for this specific use for campus housing. Some schools, not as common, but choose to even use their own foundation. So there's a management agreement that would take place if you choose not to manage the student housing. Cyon is a manager, we are not here to be your manager. That's a conflict, so just so everyone's aware. So if there's a management entity, that agreement is typically three to five years. Your ground lease is going to be probably about 35-ish and your management entity, which that is the group that's actually working with your students day in and day out. So that's an important decision that comes along with your developer if you choose not to manage yourself. After 30 to 40 years, or whenever the debt has been repaid, but it's approximately 30 to 40 on average, the improvements return to the ownership of the district. There are financing levers all throughout, a capital reserve fund too. So there are requirements to make sure that you are returned a building that is a quality building. Because of course, if you know you're the owner in the last 10 years, it'd be easy just, the bond documents do not allow for that. Go to the next slide. So as we talked about too, and we're giving you at a very, very high level, that it's all about really, it's really about control and risk. It's all about your students when it comes right down to it. But how much control do you want to have of those students and how much risk are you willing to take? How closely do you want to align yourself to this project? The P3 on this chart sits right directly in the center of the axis here. I haven't seen one yet and I probably would imagine my colleagues would say the same that sits right in the happy middle ground. Because every single school is different in how much risk and how much control. And that X can move along for the 30 to 40 years as your project finance moves along too. You can go to the next slide. So there's a lot going on here and there are a lot of arrows and whatnot. This is the structure of a typical P3. And please note, district, you're sitting at the top in a blue box. But right below your box is what's called a gray 501(c)(3), of course, a not-for-profit entity. That is the owner. That is who the district, if you choose to have P3 on your campus, you will have a ground lease with a not-for-profit owner, as I mentioned earlier. That not-for-profit owner, all that project risk sits in the project financing. So that's why we go through an issuer, you obviously have a trustee, there's a very detailed indenture agreement, and there are documents that are, do we use phone books anymore? I don't think so, but let's say we still did. There are documents that are three phone books stacked high that go in. So you are protected in every single means throughout the entire length of this. Please note too, that if you choose not to take any risk, of course, taxpayer dollars do not go into this project. Sits in that 501(c)(3). Happy to explain this further if anyone would like, but this hopefully gives the flow. And you see too, below that 501(c)(3) is that developer, which is very important, of course, extremely important decision that you would make. And that developer carries the risk, especially up until you close on your project financing. There are agreements in place between district and developer that we could spend a lot of time on, I promise that we won't on this call. But please note too, that the developer is responsible for the architect and the contractor. You're a part of the design decisions, you're at the table every day, but that developer is holding those agreements, holding that risk, holding that liability of the architect and the GC. Go to the next slide. So just really at a high level and as we, I just love the visual with the road because it really is, it's a road. It's a map, it keeps going and it takes curves and sometimes there's even some forks. But we've, we're at the market and demand analysis, we've done the financial and feasibility analysis. We've shared that with you and we will absolutely follow up with what we've talked about. These, if we choose, or if we, that's not our decision, if all of you at some point decide, when you've had enough information to make a very informed decision, obviously there's a go, no-go. And then of course, we would go all the way on down to implementation and then the most important piece, and boy, is it a fulfilling moment when there's the right demand and the right project, when you see those students coming to enjoy all those objectives and achieve those objectives that you set forth in these very early meetings. You go to the next slide. So as, I can't remember now which board member said on this call, that this has been a lot of information and it absolutely has. So I know we've given you so much to think about and want to be here to answer any questions, but just some key takeaways that we've talked about for the last couple of hours is, as Chelsea mentioned, from our, both our quantitative and qualitative research, there is readiness. The investors look for readiness. And we look for readiness too, and giving our advice too, is this the right time or not the right time? As Pete mentioned and showed, there's substantial demand given that can achieve below market rate and also too, address some of those students that would otherwise not be able to live in housing, in this housing or even housing near your campuses. So there is financial viability. As we mentioned too, we can model different programs, of course, they all have different outcomes and some would not work. So I mean, we're happy to test those with you. There's so many different structures to consider and we've talked about several and your questions were incredibly insightful and brought out probably additional testing we should do. As Ted mentioned briefly in that control risk slide, is if the district chooses to offer some type of support, and my goodness, there is a long list of ways that you could, if you choose to do so, support this project, of course, that makes it more financially viable. And there are several ways too, that if we wanted to, that might be able in this scenario to achieve even being able to address more of this horrific student housing insecurity crisis. So those are some very key takeaways. Our next slide is about the questions. So Mitchell, I think that I probably turn it back to you at this point.
I had double muted there. Chelsea, thank you for taking me though. So trustees, we have presented you with a lot of information, so I want to make sure we have a chance to get your specific questions on the second chunk of information about the financing models. And then of course, broad questions, comments, concerns, you know, additional things you'd like us to research or model or to further explore for future discussions. And so I know that the Cyon team and the district team are all hand in hand, ready to take those tasks down. So I think, Madam President, if we could handle the questions relating to the financing models first and then we can maybe move to the broader conversation.
Okay, sounds good to me. And I see Trustee Manuel Kern has his hand raised.
Yes, thank you, President Schwartz. So I was at the ACCC conference in San Francisco last October at the session on student housing and I believe someone from Cyon was on that panel because it was talking about the Santa Rosa project, which I believe you all were involved in. Don't recognize if it was any of you in particular or one of your colleagues perhaps that was there. I apologize if it was one of you and I don't remember. But the discussion was around this issue of the public-private partnerships in particular. And I think it was discussing the same model, although you did add some interesting information here about the nonprofit entity being involved in the middle of this as opposed to a for-profit entity. But there was a lot of concern from, you know, colleagues at other community college districts that had gone down the public-private partnership path, that it was, you know, a difficult path because of the difficulty of achieving alignment between the academic institution, the community college or colleges' needs and the developer's interests. That was the development partner in the public-private partnership things, particularly around issues which I think our district would be facing around addressing particularly the, you know, the marginalized students and most at-risk students and the pressure on rents that creates versus the developer's interests, obviously, in the, you know, financial viability of the project and how it can be made operate and that, you know, sometimes those interests were divergent and that led to problems with the public-private partnership model. So I'm just curious if you can comment on, you know, your experiences and what you've seen and, you know, have I missed something in this discussion? Is there new wrinkles in this that you all are introducing in this public-private partnership conversation that get around some of those issues? Or are there indeed, you know, issues of divergent interests that we need to be careful about down the road?
So great question. And just for reference too, and it's all in the public documents, is that Santa Rosa Junior College is doing a very similar structure to what we just showed with that org chart. You raise an excellent point because the school district, of course, is really looking for financial, I forget what the word, Chelsea, you had up there, but it's really that financial accessibility, really making sure that, as you mentioned, the students can live here, that we don't have students that are taking advantage of us or whatnot, as you raised earlier. That's a great question. So it is absolutely very, you will be, as I mentioned, at the design table all the way through. You will be a very active, engaged member, I'm not sure of you personally, but the school district in all of the documents, all the nuances that go into the documents. Those strategic objectives that we mentioned earlier, those are so key. That keeps that alignment. We are not just solving for the biggest bottom line in campus housing. You're actually solving for mission and vision and strategic objectives. Your developer, of course, is a for-profit entity, bottom line. Those strategic objectives sometimes too are even put up in a, on a whiteboard or at these days too, you know, in a Zoom meeting during value engineering decisions, during closing documents. Ted and I are in negotiations right now with a client and they're addressed very often. So Ted, I'm not sure if you have anything more to add to that, but it's a great question he raises.
No, just to, just to confirm, there's absolutely divergence of goals and objectives between the institution and the developer. And holding the line to your goals and objectives and making sure that throughout the entire process, you're keeping those in mind in order to deliver a project that serves your stakeholders is one of the key aspects of any of these deliveries. The developer and everybody associated with the developer, while well-intentioned, are motivated by delivering a finance project that will be greeted warmly and competed against by investors. And their goal is to get it built and get it leased up and essentially put all their liability off onto the nonprofit owner. So they are motivated by one thing, which is what they do and they provide a service. And it's our responsibility as institutions and advisors to institutions to make sure that the goals and objectives we have going in are what we get out at the beginning. But absolutely, there's tension between those. Sometimes it's great, sometimes it's small, but it's always there. Anne mentioned that we're in final negotiations with an expected close next month for another California two-year. And, you know, it is arduous. It is a slog. And every, you know, every bit of every document is a piece of negotiation between us and the developer and we're holding the line the whole time. Because their motivation is singular and ours is more diverse and mission-based and so that's what we're sort of fighting against the whole time. It would be strange if that tension wasn't there. So that's partnership.
Well, I hate to make a sweeping generalization off of, you know, a handful of data points in one room at one conference, but there was a sense of regret of those who had gone through the public-private partnership process that if they had to do it over again, they probably would have preferred to do a district-financed approach to have control over the project. I'm just curious, and you guys have done a zillion of these presumably over your 20-year history, what's your general sense for, from clients that have gone down this path? Do they regret it at the end of the day and wish they had done a, you know, their own financing and their own management of the project? Or, you know, or do you think that at the bottom line at the end of the day, they were happy with the public-private partnership approach?
So, okay, sure. Quite frankly, I really don't know too many that, I'd be kind of curious who said that, but they've regretted taking the P3 approach. We, and it's not in our state, it's a different state right now, is we're working with the two-year and they had gone around to different two-years in their area. And this is not a shout-out to our industry, but I mean, to our, what we do, but it's just stated fact, is that two of those schools have proceeded without really doing a strong market and demand analysis. They really weren't a strong owner. And then later even at one of the conferences too, one of those colleges where we were presenting came up and said afterwards, gosh, we should have done a process like this either with us or one of our competitors in the industry. So we have seen, I've seen a little regret there. But overall, there are absolutely pros and cons to self-finance and P3, as we mentioned earlier. And I just can't say that I've sat in a lot of meetings with an overwhelming majority of folks that say they regretted either doing one delivery method or the other. And Ted, please add on to that.
No, I, you know, obviously, like you said, there's always a danger for making inferences from a small set of data. I would say that the longer term the perspective is, probably the better the feelings are about the project. I would also say that if you, you know, if the district has gobs of debt capacity and feels confident in its ability to deliver a project, I would always suggest you get third-party management because again, you want to make sure that you're, you know, you're focusing on the things you can deliver well, like resident life functions and things like that. But if you've just, you know, if you think you can do it better and you can save, you know, 250 basis points on the financing, then why wouldn't you? And we tell that to a lot of clients. I mean, if you've got, you know, the ability to do a project and maintain flexibility for future capital planning at all your campuses and can do it in a responsible manner and can even do it in a way that can repay that debt responsibly and feel confident in your ability to deliver a project, I'm not sure I would give P3 much of a shrug myself. I think when done right, it is an excellent, it is an excellent delivery method for institutions that want to maintain flexibility going forward, that are interested in deferring that capital liability off their balance sheets to a private party and that, you know, have done a good job, as Anne said, of planning and preparing and getting ready to take on that kind of partnership. I think it's excellent. But, you know, if you're in the business of doing that kind of work, you know, why take on somebody else's, you know, nonsense when you got your own nonsense to deal with, you know? But I think that's, I haven't run across too many people, especially a couple of years out, who regret it. There were certainly, there's certainly instances where there's regret. But I think, I think everybody to a client has achieved what they set out to achieve. And again, some of the, some of the things you, projects you read about, I think that are maybe in distress right now and not because of COVID, but they were in distress because of poor planning or because they shouldn't have been done in the first place.
Trustee Holliver?
So a few questions about the financing or, you know, the financing and management options. So I guess getting to the last point, if we have the capacity to pay for this ourselves, you say, go for it. Do college districts that pay typically, well, in the state of California, does that require, I mean, we don't have, like, don't worry, you're telling about 350 million dollars and loose change. So do they typically go out for a facilities bond, which would require a vote of residents? And what's the success rate? Or do they do it some other way that doesn't require getting voter approval for a bond?
I don't want to, that's.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
No, no, that's a follow-up question for me, but I just want to make sure. I have, I have anecdotal evidence of that, but I want to make sure that I have an opportunity to give you a better answer on that.
Sure. So in California, there's 10 or 12 schools that have, I can't quote me directly on that, I never should know it off the top of my head, but, but have had campus housing for quite some time and they're rural campuses. And they have been financed, really in all the different ways you said above. But some through bonds as well, some through measures, some through community bonds. Lately, there has been more of a, a trend, and I don't know 100% why, going more towards the P3. But there's also too, in a couple of different measures that I'm aware of right now at least, housing is in, is mentioned in the approved bonds and approved measures. So a couple of the districts right now are deciding if they take those monies and they use the measure to finance this, what you said, all the advantages, or if they should put those towards academic facilities. So there's no one answer for any one of the over 100 districts because it really depends on what academic buildings you need, what measures have been passed. Orange Coast College was in the midst of implementing a pretty significant bond program. And they did not include housing, so they went with the P3. To achieve housing at the same time, while they brought several academic buildings as well as an improved student center and a new gym facility onto their campus. So they, obviously the building types all mesh together, but two different delivery systems. That's absolutely a district, obviously, decision in how to best. Of course, we mentioned too, the risk and control shift. But also too, does the, the control of your students and most likely lesser rents if you were to finance it yourself? Ted, do you have anything more to add to that?
No, just that, I mean, what we're seeing in the market right now is a pretty decent appetite for these 501(c)(3) bonds for California. So the pricing is getting very competitive. It's never going to be, you know, GO level, you know, ratings or yields. But the financing is very competitive. And, you know, like I said, if done right, you know, the ability to move that obligation off of your balance sheet or the taxpayers', you know, obligation, whether it be through taxes or whatever, you know, it, it becomes very attractive. So i- if done right, it, it gets you close there on the cost of funds and, and the, the control, you know, the, the abdication of control is minimal. The other thing that we haven't talked about is, you know, essentially the, the partnership structure allows you to take the value you're contributing to this project, right? Which is essentially the land. It's the ability to construct a project on a piece of land that district owns. It takes that value and it essentially defers it to the bottom of a, of a cash, of a project cash flow in the form of residual revenue that is essentially, you know, goes straight to the district. And so I, I heard earlier, you know, this sentiment about wanting to explore ways to reach more stakeholders with regards to, you know, making it easier for them on the housing front and really exploring kind of what the district could do with regard to that. And one of the things that we haven't talked about, you know, we've talked about the project financing approach to affordability, which is okay. If I incrementally increase the cost, say 5% on these kind of units, I can provide 10% at a deep, deeply subsidized rate. What we haven't discussed is the fact that, you know, in a partnership model, where, where you have moved that entire debt obligation off your balance sheet, you're also receiving essentially deferred ground rent at the bottom of a waterfall that, that's significant, that also could contribute on a student basis to your ability to, to subsidize housing costs for individuals. So there's that as well. Yes, you're, you're going to have rents that are going to be determined by the terms of financing obtained through a third party, but you also have access to significant amounts of cash flow, assuming the project, you know, performs to pro forma. That can enable you to establish a lot of programming to support people who really need housing assistance. So there's that as well. You know, I think when done properly, it, it can be a boon to your mission. And, and that's one advantage as well. I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Couple other questions. I know in the past, you know, couple of years, we, we have been approached by private interests, individuals or companies, I'm not sure, maybe both, that have wanted to do some kind of housing. And it seemed pretty clear based upon the, the way, you know, we only heard a little sketch of it. But they were focused on things such as students who are veterans, students who are in foster care. I assume that's because there are state bonds or other state tax write-offs. You know, there are advantages to the developer to, right, offer housing to veterans and perhaps foster youth and perhaps other specific groups rather than just strictly need, need-based. Can you discuss that and whether that has been part of the deals that have been cut with other districts that it's got earmarked units for targeted populations because the developer or manager is then getting some financial advantage for that?
I can say that that would not be, I can't say that through this particular P3 structure, and it's just one, it's, it's a tax exempt structure that really restricts residents of the building to, you know, identified stakeholders of the district. I don't know that, I don't think that there's further restrictions that can be replaced on the tenants. Developers using taxable financing, I think certainly can provide programming for those types of residents, but because of fair housing may be restricted. If there are California-specific programs regarding those specific cohorts, we would need to research that and get back to you unless, Anne, you know of any.
So you can put, probably wouldn't be too advisable to put into your long-term closing documents, but prioritization of different residents. So like you mentioned, the foster youth, the veterans or whatnot, there's Guardian Scholars, whatnot. So that can be included in a document that these students will receive prioritization. So we're really getting down into a really good tactic, but it's definitely a very detailed tactic. So through your manager and working with them, there absolutely means to enable certain prioritizations. And Ted, you're couldn't, obviously, as always, that's a great point you bring up, especially when you're working with a, if you just go with a private developer, as Ted mentioned, you really get that control risk. You lose control of being able to prioritize different cohorts because of fair housing.
And if the developers are accessing state bond cap or whatever, that, that's maybe got some set-asides or, or reserved funding for specific targeted cohorts, then obviously that, you know, that's something that comes into play. But then really the issue is, you know, where does that leave the district with regard to controlling, you know, the development for use by its stakeholders?
Okay, so I, I think what I'm hearing is that none of that is built into any of your models. That's something that we might, and I'm not saying we want it, but just to be clear, that's completely outside of, you know, the, the, the options you've presented. Then I have one other question in terms of the two private options. Well, first, I'm assuming, maybe, tell me if I'm right or wrong, that prevailing wage laws and things of that nature would not apply if it was a private developer, but let me know, am I right or wrong about that?
So that, that's not a pure yes or a no. It's actually something that is been addressed really district by district because the P3 falls into, stated lightly, is somewhat of a gray area. Most districts that we're aware of choose to go with prevailing wage and require that, whether or not it's actually technically required because of the way the financing works. But since it's on district-owned land, of course, are able to put that into an RFQ solicitation or a P and say, we require prevailing wage or we, and/or our, our project labor agreement. So it's really a district decision.
And, and we would control that as part of the RFP? In other words.
That's right.
Require that the developer sign a project labor agreement, for example, in order to be.
That's correct.
And, and you've seen that done elsewhere?
Yes.
Thank you.
Question, can I have a question?
Yes.
So I guess really from the standpoint of putting a deal together, the developer, obviously, you know, from what we're hearing and makes total sense, is someone that is interested in making a profit on this and a continuing profit. And we want to have the ability to provide housing at, at a rate that is helpful to our students in below-market. So it would seem to me that, you know, we're talking about all this back and forth and fighting with the developer and maybe you got a bad developer or a good developer. This sounds to me like math. If you're going to borrow X amount of dollars because you go out there and you figure out what this is going to cost, you go out there and you take bids and you know what the cost is going to be, then you know how much you're going to need to borrow. And if you know how much you're going to need to borrow because that's what it costs to build it, then you figure out how much do I need to make in rents to be able to crack that nut? And then there are people that are smarter than me that know how to figure this all out over the course of the next 30 to 40 years and know what the incremental increases in rents would have to be to be able to take care of whatever it is, deferred maintenance, this kind of things. So this would be a math model that I think people should be able to figure out at the front end. So I guess the only way that this would not work is if the numbers that we look at don't run or if there are some moving parts that will change. The financing model is not going to change because the interest rates will be agreed upon ahead of time. So we should know what needs to be paid out unless there's, unless these are variable rates. So I, I guess, where, where does the developer then get to come in and say, okay, I now need to change this because I need to make more money on this?
Well, they, yeah, let me, let me, let me just clarify. In, in the P3 model that we're presenting, and this is, the, the 100% tax exempt debt model is used predominantly in, in the industry. It's not the only model. But in this particular model, the, the developer is essentially a fee developer. They take no long-term position or ownership in the project. As soon as the project is delivered and is substantially complete and receives its CFO, it essentially reverts to the nonprofit owner and the nonprofit owner holds it on its account. So the developer in this case is really driven by fees. And it's not to say that they're not looking to, you know, make money, but it's really not a long-term interest so much as it is a two-to-three-year risk proposition to deliver a project. With regard to the sort of project finances.
But they do need to, but they do need to sign contracts. I mean, they have subs, they sign contracts and so work has to be developed unless, you know, there's some kind of a change order or something that changes. And we have to assume that a developer signs a contract and that they are going to honor that contract and they're not going to come back and say after six months that, you know what? The cost just went up double, so now we're demanding more. So, I mean, where, where are these pitfalls where they can basically take advantage of the situation? I see what you're saying. The owner will own it, but, you know, where's the downside there?
Well, trying to stay ahead of California construction costs, as you know, has been a treacherous endeavor over the last 24 months. So there have been cases with a lot of our clients where a project was scoped here and 12 months later, you know, those, those types of agreements are worthless because the construction costs have increased 50%, both from a material and a labor perspective. So getting a handle on those costs and making sure, and it's one of the reasons we escalate our construction costs for our models, is trying to get ahead of that and being conservative. So those costs are ever-changing. You know, a, a, you know, developer comes in and the district and the developer make certain representations about the condition of the site. You get in three months into the site, it's, it's, you know, there's three previously unknown leaking underground storage tanks. There's, there's any number of ways costs can increase. Of course, we try and mitigate them and keep that risk as much as possible on the developer's side, but sometimes there's no avoiding that. In terms of the financing, there's no forward locking of rates or anything like that. If you were to go to the market right now, identify a partner, you know, execute a pre-development agreement for a project of the size of the district that perhaps might be contemplated, you're looking at 18 months to get to a financial closing. There's no one who's going to take the forward rate risk of financing the project at X today, 18 months from now. And there's, I, I know in private financing solutions, there are forward locks that you can purchase. That just doesn't exist in this industry for tax exempt bonds. So there really is no way to, to predict what your rate will be. You know, Pete and I used a rate that we felt was appropriate, given what we've seen in the California market for this type of paper and for what we think the market's going to do for the next 18 to 24 months. But who knows what happens? Maybe we have another, you know, health emergency. I mean, we just don't know what happens. And, and so there's all kinds of ways that the cost can fluctuate on us. And we're not saying that we don't keep on top of them and monitor them to within inch of their waist and attempt to control them, but there is no way to predict with, with absolute accuracy what our cost is going to be. And so that, that's what I wanted to respond to, to you with. I will say that, you know, keeping costs down and keeping on budget and keeping to the goals and objectives are, you know, guiding principles throughout this process.
Okay, well, I, I, I get that as far as that goes, but it, it seems to me that we need to have some, some kind of really assurances that we're not walking into something that is not going to work out down the line. Because, I mean, we have fiduciary responsibilities as far as that goes. These were our own private projects, that would be different. So I, I hear what you're saying. There are risks that have to be taken and they have to be looked at and, and be, and be determined how much of a risk is it as opposed to benefit. But thank you for your help.
No, of course.
Okay, any comments or questions from other board members?
No question, just a, a comment, I guess. You know, we have the two parts where we're talking about our students and, you know, what the sites might look like, if it's one site, one, two sites, dorms versus family, then we're also talking about the funding mechanism. At some point before it comes back as a recommendation, it might make sense for, you know, the committee that has already been formed along with one board member or two board members, but someone needs to, just to make sure that the board's voice is in that room prior to the recommendation to ensure that at least there's support of at least the two board members to, to bring this before us before we bring a recommendation that the board may or may not be supportive of. Because I, I really feel strongly personally that I don't need to be on that committee because I'm all for it. I'm all for bringing this, this project forward. And I think it definitely needs to make sure that it's supportive of our most at-risk and vulnerable students. And I do agree with the site location, but I believe having a lot of those questions answered before coming back for a recommendation, there needs to be some, some more vetting of, of some of the, the opportunities that might be there, whether it's district financing versus the P3 model. So that's just my two cents. I do believe that, you know, there should be. I do believe that, you know, there should be further dialogue and that there should be some type of board involvement. Even if it means bringing it back as separate items at the board, as a board meeting additional for discussion. That can also be done. But I definitely believe that the board is nowhere near where we need to be as far as making the decision on the financial mechanism that we might use. Or even having some clarity on the direction that we want Cyon to continue to explore.
Thank you. I, trustee Holliver?
You're muted.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I agree with trustee Goodman's comments and in particular, the latter part of the comments. Because I don't think we're ready to, you know, assign to the committee the task of bringing us a recommendation. We're not there yet. And I think if the board has time, not, I would say not tonight, but soon, to really talk this through. I'm not sure how much of a recommendation we would need from the committee. Because it seems to me if first, we need to do the go or no-go, right? I mean, you know, and then second, narrow it down to which method we want to pursue. I, I don't think we pursue multiple methods. And that's really where I'm really needing more time to think it over. And, you know, want to hear other trustees' input. Because I can see upside and downside to different options. And I think I also have concerns about the price for housing. You know, so if our goal is to help people that are struggling with their lives. All aspects of their lives while trying to get an education. Not sure that the prices that we saw for, you know, whether it's a studio or one bedroom would actually do much. I, I guess I'd want to have more, a better understanding of that. Is that the magic, you know, is that, is that a very key missing ingredient that? And again, I have to look at the numbers that you had on your PowerPoint. You know, if someone can rent for X amount of dollars per month and no subsidy, can they afford that, right? I mean, so I, I, I guess that's where I start wondering how, how viable it is. Without subsidies that we don't have the money to subsidize. I mean, I understand a cross subsidy, you know, you charge a little bit higher base rent for whatever it is, eighty percent. To then let the other twenty percent get in at a lower rate. Does that pencil out? I guess that's where I start to feel, I, I just don't know.
Chancellor and then trustee Mandelker.
I just want to, first of all, I appreciate all the comments. And again, just to reiterate, reiterate what I, I think I said at the very top. Yet, we are at the very beginning stages of this. And, and tonight was really the first of many conversations, however, we need to have them. We have to go into this with eyes wide open. We haven't even talked about the operational ramifications on the institution. We haven't talked about, we've gotten a little bit into, you know, where, how do we prioritize students? So if tonight actually generated a lot of questions, I actually think we, we did our job. Because this is really the first step of getting this conversation going in a serious way. And again, at the end of the day, you know, our job as, as staff is to provide you and walk with you through this and provide you the information you need to make an informed decision. And, and we will support that decision either way. It's a, it's a big decision whichever way it goes. So I just wanted to reiterate, we, we're not anywhere near a recommendation. We're, and we just, we have a lot more work to do even beyond this presentation. But this, this is the cornerstone before you ask the next set of questions as far as I'm concerned.
Trustee Mandelker.
Yes, thank you. So first of all, great presentation, it was very informative, you know, I've learned a lot from going through this. And, you know, clearly you guys know a lot about this stuff, a lot more than we do because we've never done this before. And I really appreciate the, the directional approach in this presentation. And that compared to past presentations we've had in housing, you didn't come in with a solution then looking to fit that to a problem that we may or may not have had. I really like the fact that it's really based on, you know, serving our students, getting data of where we are and listening to the board and where we may want to go. So I, I like this approach. I think we're on the right track. I agree with my colleagues who have spoken previously and with chancellor Claire. That, you know, this is the start of a conversation and we've got some more questions to answer. And some more discussions to have before we reach that go or no-go decision. But I think we are definitely making forward progress in a very positive way here in, in working through this. So I'll just add, in addition to the, the points that trustee Goodman and trustee Holler raised, particularly around the, the rental cost. And will that really effectively address the population that we're trying to serve? Let me just throw a couple of other items in from my personal list of next step items. So one is, again, really understanding from your data, what is the, you know, the demographic? Or maybe not demographic, I guess isn't the right word. But the, the population that we're trying to serve of our, of our most housing impacted and vulnerable students. Are they the single students in the, you know, what, eighteen to twenty-one-year-old age range or whatever that are first time coming in that need a dorm room? Or are these families of one or two parents with or without childrens that need family housing in an apartment? Because I think having a little better clarity around that will help us focus the kind of project we, we will need. Which will tie into my next question, which is, you know, is there a way of jumping in, in, in a smaller way first? You know, something less than a thousand units, something less than a $300 million price tag and 250,000 square feet of buildings? You know, that, that we can do first to get our arms around this? Or is that simply economically not feasible? Because you have to have a certain economy of scale to make this work in whatever financing model we wind up going with. And then the third, you know, question I want to answer is around those financing models. Really to see a lot more detail around the comparison of the, you know, our own owned and operated kind of facility versus the P three partnership model. Particularly some of the questions that maybe chancellor Claire, you and the finance team can answer around what is our borrowing capacity? You know, would we even have the feasibility of doing something like this, whatever the scale winds up being? That, that we decide is, is optimal to, to be able to do that on our own? Or are we really dependent on having to go out and find a third-party partner to be able to finance this and make this work from a financial perspective? So, and I, and I really think seeing maybe the, the two options compared with some real numbers plugged in. So we actually got some idea of what is, what are the actual dollars and cents that we're talking about with the two different options? Would be helpful to be able to evaluate what, what to me are the two options? I think we do it ourselves, we do the P three partnership. Personally, I, I don't see much reason or, you know, interest, if for me personally at least, in saying, we just want to hand this off to a third-party to go out and build it and we'll enter into some, you know, commitment of some students their way or whatever. That, that third option didn't sound very intriguing. And I, I don't think it, what I seem to see in it, remain much resonance with my colleagues or frankly with the Cyon folks either in that approach. So anyway, that, that's kind of my next step list. And I think continuing this conversation and bringing back more feedback for another conversation at the board would be a, a good thing.
Okay. Yeah, I would agree. I listened to all this, it goes through my mind. We've had some conversations and it's taken us a long time to get here. But it was really detailed and valuable information. I would tend to hope that we would really zero in on our students and the need. And really try to grasp that before we move any further. Because I just wonder if, I said earlier in the K, the elephant in the room is COVID-19. What, what has that played a part in our students having even more problems with housing? Did it make a difference on the numbers and the concern? And I agree with trustee Mandelker. And I think looking at something small, smaller in size and kind of getting your harms around that before moving into something bigger makes sense to me. But that would just be my input at the moment. So is there any other comments from board members? I would give the opportunity for the public, if anybody from the public would like to make any kind of comment at this time. Trustee Mandelker, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have other comments on housing in, in not related to Cyon and their report. So before we close the topic completely, I've, I've got a couple of other things I'd like to say. But, you know, if we want to have public feedback on the, the Cyon report in this particular topic, maybe that makes more sense to do that first.
Okay, thank you for that. So I'll look for hands raised from the public if anybody wants to speak on the report. And that would be. I don't know who that is. My glasses aren't here.
It looks like Can Humanities.
Can Humanities, okay?
Yes, I don't know why I'm signed in as Can Humanities. I was hoping to get a picture here, but this is Joan Murphy from the Humanities and Social Sciences Division in, at Kenyatta College. Hello, everybody. Very interesting report. I guess I have, I know you're talking about student housing. But I also have concerns about faculty and staff housing. And, you know, there are people being subsidized in our housing already. And, you know, I'm paying very, very high cost of housing in San Mateo. And yet I don't have the benefit of any kind of subsidized housing. So I guess it concerns me because even with faculty and staff housing, I think there's issues and problems about longevity and all that. So this seems like, I hope that you're very, very thoughtful about how you proceed about approving this for, for students. It seems like it's, it's a big, big, big undertaking. That's, that's, that's all I have to say. I appreciate hearing the presentation. And I know students are suffering, but trust me, staff are suffering too with high-cost housing. And not being able to live on any of the campus housing that's available at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Any other hands raised? Oh, Maxine. I assume that's Maxine Turner.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, this has been an interesting discussion. And, you know, I'm still struggling with really what the need is. And if the, the board has really discussed publicly enough how they're going to be able to focus on the community. Semitae Community College has always been a local-serving entity for our local residents. And some of the unintended consequences that I hope will be considered is if housing is part of the benefits of being a student. How will that relate or de-motivate students who we are trying to move through the college system more quickly and have quicker, successful outcomes? Might this not slow everything down? Because housing is a real benefit. And I'm also really concerned, understanding and wanting to support students who are having needs. But won't this again become a benefit that will attract students from other counties and other parts of the state to come to the community colleges and maybe excluding some of our local students? So I hope you will consider how to really frame it so that we're benefiting our local students. And really understanding that housing is an issue for these students' families. Not just if they themselves have a family, but even the single students. If they're homeless or having a hard time, their families are. And there are so many fantastic housing providers in the county that maybe you should also be considering providing land for affordable housing for community, for San Mateo residents. So I'd just like to go back to the big picture, who are we really trying to support? And it was good to hear some of the board members bring that up. Good luck, this is a big, big thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the members from the public who'd like to raise the hand and be acknowledged? Okay, I don't see any, so we will go back to trustee Mandelker. Do you want to add?
So pivoting a little bit from the, the Cyon report and, you know, excellent discussion we've just had about what we can do with just ourselves. You know, it's, it's a great conversation and great, you know, directional move that we're, we're making here. But I think we all recognize that this is not a short-term solution to the very real needs our students have tonight and tomorrow night and next month and the month after that. This is what we're talking, what we've just finished talking about is a years-down-the-road solution before we welcome a student to put their head down on a pillow and a bed in one of these buildings. In the meantime, I think there's some other things we ought to be looking at doing to help our students in the short term with, with the housing crisis that we've currently got. And I'm, I'll just throw out three suggestions, which I'm sure my colleagues will be happy to shoot down or applaud or decide we want to go forward and discuss further or not or whatever. But let me just throw them out and see where we can go. One is to follow on with something that Maxine Turner just said. And it ties into a conversation we had briefly at, at our last board meeting. But it, since the topic wasn't about housing, we couldn't really get into this conversation. But it's in reference to the piece of property that the district has in Half Moon Bay that we just extended the, the farming lease for. I know there've been several other, you know, mark, below-market rate-based projects that have just been approved in Half Moon Bay that they currently have gotten some special dispensation to move forward with over on the coast side. Even though that is typically a very development-sensitive area. And I'm just wondering if it would improve us in the line of trying to just help the community at large to, to let the, you know, below-market rate and the low-income housing and the affordable housing community know that we have this land available on the coast side, which I don't think we plan to use for a campus anytime in the immediate future. I don't think it's feasible to use for a campus based on what we know. But perhaps it is of interest to somebody to build affordable housing or help address the housing crisis. And we should at least put it out there that it's available and see what the, see what the level of interest might be and see what might be feasible in that context. Because I don't know that's something that we've ever explored before. So that would be point number one. Point number two, in the short term, especially as we see the, the impact that COVID-19 has had on our local economy. Is there short-term housing solutions that we can put in place that will help our students? For example, are there existing housing facilities available that we could rent, possibly even buy? But, you know, maybe more realistically, secure some kind of lease on for a year or two to help our students out? For example, existing apartment buildings, existing motels that because of the drop in tourism, for example, may be sitting empty right now with owners that are looking for some way of getting occupancy. And it doesn't look like, you know, international travel is going to be bouncing back anytime in the next few months, let's put it that way, thanks to COVID-19. Is there some kind of creative deal that we can structure for the next six months, a year, whatever? To help get students into some form of housing that, that we would, you know, in a sense, be the master landlord for or something like that? So just a concept of ways, is there a way of leveraging existing housing stock in the county to help benefit our students? And then the third suggestion I would have is going back to one of my, my favorite personal topics, of course, is we have still, I believe, a large number of students who are homeless. They do not have a secure roof over their head, a large number of them. You know, again, I don't know if this is still an issue that exists because we don't have face-to-face classes. Maybe they've left the county and it's found, found someplace else where there's more affordable housing available. But to the extent that we do have students who are living out of their cars while they're trying to go to school. I, I won't bring up the safe parking program again, I promise. But we've had a couple of suggestions that have not been followed through on this thing. But I'll make a third one, which is we have about fifteen hundred square feet of empty space at the top of building five. And I know we can't bring students back onto campus yet. But when presumably maybe in January or some future semester, we have the option of bringing students back on campus for classes. Can we look at using that space as some kind of emergency housing shelter? Much as we would for, you know, victims of a flood or a tornado or something like that? We've done that before. It's space that's not currently being used for academic purposes. They could make use of the shower facilities at SMAC, for example, before SMAC opens or after SMAC closes. And I'm not proposing that this becomes a permanent encampment, but just an emergency overnight shelter where people could, you know, get in out of the cold and the rain that we're going to be seeing here in the next few months and have a safe place to put their head down at night. to put their head down at night on a cot and then leave in the morning and go to their classes or whatever. And if we could start investigating that now so that we would be prepared with a program like that when we're able to have students come back on campus for classes, I think that would help some of our students who are impacted by the housing crisis here in the county. So those are my three suggestions that I'll lay out. And hopefully, if there's any interest in that, maybe the administration can explore those a little bit further and see if any of those ideas have merit.
Thank you. I would assume you will get some feedback from our chancellor on some of those topics.
Or my colleagues as well.
Your colleagues are not signifying anything.
I'm taking notes as you ask me. So yeah, I've got it down. Thank you, trustee Menelker.
Trustee Oliver, you wanted to comment?
Those are all, I think, really important and worthwhile approaches. And maybe quicker to accomplish right now while we're working towards longer-term solutions. So I think we need to look at all the options that trustee Menelker suggested.
I would, I just wanted to say, chancellor, the Half Moon Bay property, it must be that long, if you don't remember, that we've investigated that. So it definitely would seem to be a time to look into that again to see if there's any interest at all. So chancellor, go ahead.
And great suggestions. And we've actually talked about this, that, you know, while we go through this very difficult or very complex decision, you're right, students need things right now. And I appreciate the comments. I forgot to mention that our, we've actually started a Student Basic Needs Task Force. And actually, Jamila Moore and Tom Bauer are co-chairing that task force. So they're right now closest to a lot of the solutions we're delivering to our students, literally passing out food every Friday, the Second Harvest Food Bank. So we probably need to come back to the board and give you an update on that task force. And housing eventually is, housing is part of that conversation. And so I know Paul, Tom, and Jamila are here tonight, and I'm certainly, we'll probably take those ideas back through there to see what we can do. And also other things that we are doing to provide immediate relief to students. So all great suggestions. I appreciate it.
Thank you. How about our student trustee Jade? Do you have any comments or suggestions on this topic? There she is. Hi Jade.
Hi. I really appreciate the presentation tonight. I feel like this has been a topic that has been talked about on all three campuses. And I believe while they rock campuses have created, our councils have created a task force to speak more about this and collect more data. I know that trustee Menelker mentioned trying to start off smaller. I know that's something that I was thinking and that I kind of mentioned to our council, I think, a few weeks ago, that maybe if there is a way that we can start off smaller. And especially since the price ranges are so high. I know that living in the Bay Area, there is a certain price range to housing. But a lot of our students do have the basic need of housing, and a lot of them can't afford some of the prices that we saw. So if there's any way that we can lower pricing and still keep everything affordable for especially a lot of our at-risk students who still want to be able to pursue their education.
Thanks Jade. Thank you. Okay, anybody else would like to comment on the subject? Trustee Menelker?
Yeah, I forgot one. Let me throw one other thing too, which I've heard. Thank you Jade for prompting me on this because I've heard this feedback from students. The idea, one of the challenges for our students is often the security deposit or first and last month's rent. They can afford the monthly rent, but just getting in with that, you know, $5,000, $6,000 of money all at one point. If there's maybe a way we can look at doing a loan program for students where we can front the security deposit money, and it can get paid back over the period of the loan, of the lease rather, or something over nine months or 12 months or wherever they're in school, that might be something that we could investigate, perhaps through the foundation, see if that's something we can do with, help our students get into housing as well.
I think that's an excellent one. I just heard a friend of mine the other day, three months they had to have to get into an apartment. And if you haven't been working, that's a tough one. Any other comments or questions? Vice President Nures?
I wanted to comment that I think that there's a lot of possible solutions out there. Whether or not they're feasible is another story. From the standpoint of, I mean, I'm not unsupported of them, but a lot of these things also require, you know, the implementation, the running of these things. And I don't know that we are the best entities right now able to do that. If there are other community sources out there that are better equipped to do this, that do this, and we can then lend support to them. And we just heard, and I was thinking the same thing, if we can look to the foundation at this particular point to see if it can gear up in that area to try and help subsidize some of our students that have this greater need. And rather than us trying to provide it ourselves and not being able to do it adequately, I think that would probably be a better solution, at least at this point for the short term, to see if people can find their own housing or if we can help them find it. And if there's a way that we can help subsidize those who have the greatest need with their housing.
Thank you.
If I can comment back to trustee Nures, which is, there is a little bit of method to my madness and trying to be a little bit provocative in this stuff because, you know, we just talked about potentially having a project for 1,000 students or 900 students, you know, on our campus. And if we're nervous about the idea of managing 30 students or 90 students or 150 students in a motel or something, that might be a good way to get our feet wet first before we start jumping into managing 1,000 students at once. And so I think, you know, and you raise good questions because it's not something we've done before. And we don't have programs in place. We don't have policies in place. But we need to start thinking about it. And it's, you know, it's an honest answer. If we're reluctant to do it, and we're nervous about doing it, and we don't have the expertise, then maybe we should be thinking about, do we really want to jump in and start building a project for 1,000 students if we're concerned about that? So I think those are some of the issues that we have to talk through in the bigger context of what do we do in terms of operating housing?
Yeah, I would agree if I threw the chair. I appreciate your thoughts as far as that goes. You always come up with good ideas. And so I'm not against them necessarily, but right now, and I don't know where I'm at even on the thousand housing. I haven't heard enough to know that we could do this properly. I think it can be done, but we haven't heard the way yet. So you know what? If something is out there that we can do and we can find how to do it, great. If there are other entities that can help our students find housing because that's what they do, and then it's just a matter of money, maybe we can help out a dead end because that's the quickest way always around. I'm trying to be as efficient as possible in getting the job done. And if it's not within our forte, then maybe we can help others that can collaborate. We can collaborate with other people as well to help our students.
Okay, other comments on the subjects?
Yeah. Yeah, so trustee Goodman, I just had a question. Have we gotten anywhere on creating our portal for housing or for resources for housing on the district website yet? Or can we get an update on that, probably in an email form or something?
Go ahead, chancellor.
Through the chair, yes, trustee Goodman, yes. We probably should give you an update on that. I know that we initially created a portal and we aggregated everything. I'll have to personally check. I haven't checked in a while. Mitch, you may have more info on it. Keep in mind also that with the COVID-19 site, we have resources for students. I would presume housing resources are on there. But I know initially at the board's direction, we did actually aggregate all the housing resources we could find for students back in the fall. I just haven't looked at the site in a while, honestly. Probably should pull it up right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. The hand raised. Oh, it's Maurice, it's you. Finally saw your hand raised, sorry. Any other questions or comments on this subject? Okay.
Madam President, if not, I'd like to thank our guests from Scion. I know it's late on the East Coast where Ted is and the Midwest where Chelsea and Pete are. And Anne is on our time, so she's fine. But I thank them for their, for all the information they presented tonight. They have done a lot of work for us. And we know we have a lot of work still to do with the board. And as the chancellor referenced, and the trustees' general desire is, you know, we've got some homework to do on our end, and there's still lots of processing of information and still lots of direction the board needs to get staff in moving forward with any project that you would want to consider. So we will work with the board president in future agenda-setting opportunities to bring back updates and to try to develop a path forward for helping process this. And staff would ask us, as the trustees have additional questions or thoughts, please feel free to send those to us, and we'll incorporate those into the running list of things that we have going now. And I think our list is long after tonight, and we'll convene our Scion team tomorrow or next week to debrief on this. But we appreciate the feedback of the board, and we know this is a really important and timely issue. And we are committed to providing the board with as much information as you need to be able to make an informed decision on moving forward or not with this particular issue. And with that, I'd turn it over to the chancellor for any closing comments you might have.
Thank you.
No, and I, the other thing that I think I heard and will explore with the board in full is perhaps one or two board members joining this group as we sort of progress through this decision-making. And so we're happy to entertain that. And I'll work with the president of the board. Perhaps we can agendize something formally to take that step as well. But I also want to thank the Scion group. I got a sneak peek at parts of the presentation. And I just thought you all did a wonderful job. And I feel like we're coming out of this. I know I am much more informed, still have a lot to learn along with everybody else. But I do appreciate the work. The group was very well done.
Actually, for the group, you had a lot of questions thrown at you. Can you only imagine the questions we've had without you here? It's been, it's such a wide range of need and so concerning for the district. So I thank you very much for a very concise, very guys and open dialogue. And I know that we will meet again very soon. Okay. I think we will move, if it's okay, down the agenda to communications. As it was mentioned earlier in the evening, John Pimentel did send a communication in today that we've all received. Does anybody else want to acknowledge any communications?
Well, I believe we received three communications that addressed the subject matter that we spent most of the evening considering about the student housing.
Okay. Vice President Nures? You're muted, you're muted.
No, I was just saying I got those emails as well.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Any others that I missed? We actually got some thank you letters from some of the swimming parents, so I think we should acknowledge those as well. It's nice to not only tell us things that we should look at, but kind of compliment things that we do do once in a while. So that's refreshing to hear. Okay, we will go down to statements from board members. Any board member want to do any reporting tonight on activities? I'm sure you've been so active throughout the county. Trustee Menelker?
Yeah, it's not reporting so much. It's just in my board comments asked about agendizing something. So there were interesting comments made during public comment. I'm curious of when the budget is coming back to us. Is that at our September 20-something meeting at the end of the month, when the budget will be going back for approval?
The next meeting, correct. We just agendized it today. It will be on the August 9th meeting.
On the September 9th, next week, we'll have the budget on.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I would like to say, I mean, if this is not the rainy day that we're saving money for, I don't know what is in terms of the overall impact on our county and the economy. And I know there's activities going on to try and get workforce readiness and get people back to work quickly. I think there's some great programs. The ones I've heard about around facilities management, accounting assistants, HR professionals, and user experience designers, and a couple more that I'm probably forgetting at this point. So I think there's some really exciting programs going on. I'd like to know if there are, you know, financial limitations, if throwing more money at the problem will help create solutions faster. That would be great. And I think that was part of what Mr. Pimentel was asking about. So I think that would be a great conversation to have, as well as at some point, I think, we'll be hearing about the success numbers, hopefully, success of the Promise Scholars Program, or whether that's, you know, ready to have us double down on the investment there to help more students, although those are, you know, full-time, longer-term students. It's not necessarily a fast, you know, transition into the workforce there. But again, if there are things that we can do to help support our community in this emergency pandemic time, I think it is something we should consider using some of our reserves at this point to help deal with that situation. So I would like to have that conversation on those topics before we approve the budget or approve the budget with the understanding that we may need to dip into our reserves to do something in the not-too-distant future.
I'm going to look to the chancellor and to vice president Nures for this because we got that information after we had set the budget, I mean, after the agenda. And we have the budget thing already set to come out. So I don't know if we can get into in-depth conversation at this time. But maybe chancellor, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I certainly understand and realize a budget's just a plan. And, you know, a $200 million budget, there's certainly details, but there's also some opportunities to deploy resources. And I'm not arguing with the ideas. I think we have been pretty forward-facing in terms of making investments. I think that, I feel like we sort of heard the board loud and clear earlier this year, and we've had numerous budget presentations over the summer. You're going to see a $700,000 line item to hire more full-time faculty. We heard you loud and clear. So I think we could entertain some of that conversation. I'm looking at Bernada and Kathy because so much of this budget is wired in. And I think we would need to hear not so much about this year, but what does 20, you know, what does the next fiscal year look like? We need to use this year to really plan out what next year might look like. And I don't want to have a budget conversation tonight. We're going to be off agenda. But I think as part of the discussion, it's a long-winded answer of saying, as part of the budget discussion, certainly, I think there's room to talk about, you know, what are some of the extra steps we may need to consider? How might we deploy resources? But I think we also have to be, we also have to be mindful of reality, of what the next year is going to look like as well and make some judgment. So I think there's room for a conversation. Good ideas. Nobody could argue. I often, I feel like, you know, I often say we're asked to do so much with so little so little, when you think about all the things we're, we're asked to do, and we've got to figure out a way to make it work. But it is a balancing act, always.
Trustee Nures, did you have a comment?
I think, I think that the comment that trustee Menelker made, obviously, we can make revisions to our budget. Budget has been a process that we've gone through now for several months. The administration has, has put it together, we have discussed it, and it's coming before us at a meeting for an approval. And so I, to take, to try and take it apart at this particular time might be a little bit hard, but I, I certainly agree with the fact that a budget can always be revised, and we can always go back if we find things that we find appropriate and make revisions to it down the line. And I think that that's probably the, the better approach under the, the time, the time crunch that we're under and, and the fact that we've already moved forward, but to this point, and it's ready to be approved. So I, I have no qualms with those revisions as well anytime.
Trustee Oliver?
So first, I applaud the suggestions from Mr. Pimentel. I think it's always good to get that, you know, input from the community. We don't, we don't get that very much of it, frankly. And these are thoughts that are very much worth, are, are wild to consider. So I think both of the trustees who spoke earlier, in a way, I'd say you're both right. I, I don't know that we, you know, would be revising a budget at our next meeting, because it's kind of the first time this idea's come forward. But I think we can look at what those numbers might mean without, you know, saying, okay, we're going to amend the budget tonight. And, you know, it may, I mean, first, I, I want to start by understanding what the impacts would be for, you know, making it easier for more students to attend our, our colleges financially. And, you know, that's sort of the first question, right? And then with, with that, with that data, then we can, you know, consider it for a future board meeting. But I, I'd like to get some data that we can start, you know, thinking through.
Okay, I think, well, the staff will do the best they can in the time that we have already set, and continue on.
I think, I think having, yeah, having data is always, is always a good thing to start a conversation with. And so maybe this data around the, the workforce, you know, repurposing programs or whatever you're calling those, those, you know, 12 to 16-week rapid programs, and, and what the, what the budget for that is, and whether that's something that could use more money, you know, what the impact would be if there is a need to reduce tuition or do more tuition waivers than we normally do, what that might look like. And then, you know, when we get to the Promise Scholars Program, or whether it's worth making a further investment if this is really working and helping students get to success in a, in a better way than the traditional methods that we've used, then if it's worth putting more money into that program in the short term. So maybe those are the three sets of data that would be helpful to have a conversation around when we can get that.
Yeah, and I, I think also, a lot of the, the rapid retraining or the, the workforce work is already being done. It's just a matter of, I guess, getting us the data. So, but I do believe we should have the conversation. I do believe it should be agendized, but I just want to make sure it's as narrow as possible, so we can focus on student access as well as ensuring that the programs that are already being supported, doing some of this work, will be getting any funding if
I think the staff will do the best they can for the next, since we're, we're looking at Wednesday already. This is Thursday.
And I would, again, I would add, we also have an obligation to forecast what the future looks like. Can't make this decision without thinking about the next fiscal year as well. So again, great ideas, not, not, not at all arguing with them. We just, like everything, we have to have eyes wide open.
Exactly. Okay, Mr. Menelker, do you have anything else? Any other board members have comments at this time? Student trustee? Enough, you've had enough? You have a comment?
The only thing, the only thing I would report is that we scheduled our district student council meetings, so hopefully we have one lined up the next two weeks, within the next two weeks.
Very good. Congratulations, okay. So hearing nothing else, statements for the board. We, as, we traditionally do each year, the study session and business meetings will be reversed this month to accommodate the adopt, adoption of the budget like we just talked about. Therefore, the next meeting of the board will be a regular meeting conducted by Zoom on September 9th. This month's study session, study session will be on September 23rd. If there's no more business, I will adjourn the meeting. Bye. Thanks for coming. Thanks for staying up. Well, it's not that too late.
Safe, everyone.
Yeah, not that bad tonight.
To everyone.
Yeah, so you fooled me, Karen, it's, you moved the regular meeting to next week. I thought it was, the budget was going to be at the end of the month.
Yeah, no. I kept thinking this was a total call session, so don't bother. We're having a study session.
Okay, very good, well, well done.
Hard to keep up with everything.
Yep, very good. See you next Wednesday.
Yeah. Bye.